Public school board. All stand will serve.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to take a motion to clear out the meeting.
Move.
First and second, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries. Meetings act is taped on the door back there, can you read that? Roll call, Dr. Thor.
Yes.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Tim.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Approved agenda. If anybody has any questions. Can a motion approve that?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second? First and second, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay. Okay, number seven, discussion items. Marcia's here from Lincoln. Did you ask me to give it to us?
Okay, so before we get started, I have put some blank pieces of paper in front of you. If there is a hot topic, if there is a scenario, there is something that you want to be certain that we cover this evening, please feel free to jot that down and I will be including it in the discussion. I don't know what I don't know. I can't respond to questions, I can't respond to specific scenarios unless I better understand where your questions lie and/or how I can apply what we're going to be talking about. So, as I open it up, you know, that's, I want it to be open dialogue. I want you to feel comfortable and just asking questions but interrupt and pause and we'll circle around. But I'll try to also envelop my own scenarios into the discussion as we go along. That's not initial for me to do that, but I certainly want this to be beneficial to you and I appreciate the opportunity to be here, the invite to be here. I would like to start with the opportunity to better know you and who I am and what I bring to the table. I was actually a school board member myself. I was on the Waverly Board. Dr. Ernst, who is now the Associate in CSA Executive Director, he was predominantly, the 12 years that I was on the Board, 10 years of it, he was our superintendent. I was Board President for 10 years while I was in that district, served under his leadership. That's how I describe it. It was my time on the Board, I made no hesitation in saying one of the most rewarding experiences as an adult outside of being a wife, a mom, and a nan, and not a grandma. I, and then had that opportunity during my tenure on the Board to work with the School Boards Association. I spent several years in the search field, helping districts hire superintendents. And then showing my age, you only see my 25-year-old eyes, that's the best part of the face covering. But 20-some years at the Association now. And at Carcan Drive and I traveled the state working with boards and superintendents in a vast amount of different programs and services. Our Board Leadership Department is four D, there's four of us now in that department. For many, many years, it was a one-person show. And we do strat planning, we do community engagement, we work with boards, roles responsibilities, facilitation of community engagement, you name it, we do a lot. So, with that being said, I now want to better understand who you are. And so I'm going to start with Wyatt. And yeah, you did expect that. How long have you been on the Board? Did you graduate from Plankview?
Yes.
All right, and then do you still have kids in the district? But most especially Wyatt, what do you bring, what dynamic do you bring to your Board as a leadership group?
I graduated from Plankview, '94. I have three sons in the district, elementary, junior high, and high school. I've only been on the Board for two years, in fact, not quite two years.
Okay.
Two years, anyway. And what do I bring, anyway, to the Board? I guess, I got involved with the school board simply because I had kids in school. No other reason. Anyway, I didn't see an issue at the time, anyway, when I threw my name in the hat at all. I had attended other school board meetings previous to that for some issues like number one, anyway, and a few other things. And I just, I thought, I guess it was kind of a little bit of a social responsibility, you know, to do your time.
Good for you.
So, that's it.
I did.
Not like a sentence, but you know.
It's just so relatable.
That's all, anyway.
The pay is amazing, however, you must have.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
I'm Mike Sauer, I'm just my eighth year on, just my fourth year as President.
Are you running again?
Yes.
You are, okay, good for you.
It's a last-minute decision. Actually, it was mostly because of my wife that said, "I'm fine with you running again," you know. And so that kind of turned the tide for me last night, so otherwise I don't know that I would have. I've got three kids, they're spread out, one's 37, one's 25, and one's 12. So I still have one kid, so I've had kids in the school for a long time. I didn't graduate here, graduated right up, down the road. Well, I will have grandkids here, so, but I've kind of been drawn to school. You know, I've coached here, I've repped here, I've coached high school, I've coached younger elementary, and so I just, I look at it as, you know, giving back of your time to your community.
Good for you.
That's why, probably why I got on.
Okay, good for you. Krista?
Yes, I'm the old one here.
Elliot is older still.
I think I'm on my 11th or 12th year.
Okay.
I got on because I just love the community and wanted to, you know, give back to the community. I didn't graduate from here, I have no kids in the school system. I believe I can bring the value of, you know, not worrying about if something, if a decision is made, worrying about if it's going to carry off into the community, on my kids, whatever. So, about it.
That's great, that is great.
I'm Jim Thor, I'm originally from Norfolk.
Okay.
Served on Norfolk Catholics School Board. Served the state as examiner, so I know all the state works. Thought I could bring some of the private school thought processes to the school, but it works completely different.
It does, doesn't it?
I'm on the Board, if that girl always thought it was a good idea. Gets to get a mask on. But, no, it's interesting. I mean, I work with the diversity of everybody and we'll eventually get it done, it's just a different path.
Right, right, it is, it is the case. Okay, Dr. Earl, how long have you been in the district?
This is year five, unless you count the 70s and 80s.
Right, because you actually graduated from Plankview, did you not?
I did.
Okay, all right, so five, seven years. Where were you prior to?
When you were appointed City Superintendent, prior to that, Principalship in Central City.
That's right, okay.
And prior to St. Francis for eight years.
All right, nice, very nice. All right, we can pass.
Somebody else can take your answer.
Trent.
Yeah. Trent Tar, I graduated from here. I will, I have a kid in preschool and I'll have another one potentially in school here. I didn't think I would get on, but I don't know, I guess, I just got on just because I thought it'd be a good idea to try to help out the community and make sure that things kept on like they were supposed to.
Okay, all right, nice. Chip.
Yep. Tim Rasmussen, I graduated '94 with Wyatt. I've got two kids. Senior, my son just graduated last year, and I've got a sophomore girl this year. I've got kind of some previous board experience, been on church boards for six years and co-op board for eight years, so.
This is a different experience, isn't it?
It's different, yeah.
It is.
It's different, but I think I, I like, I feel that I can see both sides of stories and try to bring people together. I don't think one-way strength's likely.
Great, 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 great. So, we have the principals. So, Kyle, can you tell us a little bit, or share with me how you've been in the district? And prior to that, what your role was when you were there?
Kyle Schmidt, my wife graduated from here, I did not. And so we have three kids. Harper would be a kindergartner, Nick Riggins is two, Chloe is four months old. This will be my, this is my second year in the district. Previously, I was a business and technology teacher at Battle Creek for eight years. And that was my first job out of college.
Okay, all right, so you've lived your life as an administrator now, right?
That's right.
All right, and are you secondary?
Yes, seventh, twelfth.
Seventh, twelfth, okay, all right, okay. So we're going to dig in, I will collect those sheets from you, if you have anything that you've jotted down, I'd be sure to log me down. So I brought several different resources with me. The best news of the evening is that I'm not going to go through each of these documents page by page, but I do want to begin with, I want you to look at the Board Superintendent Roles Responsibilities. So, out of the chute, the thing that I always say to the Board is that your first and foremost primary responsibility is to hire a superintendent. You must by law employ a superintendent. Second is, by law, you must evaluate the superintendent and then govern through policy, engage your stakeholders, so that you understand their expectations of you. They, you understand their expectations of what that graduate looks like when they walk across the stage at graduation. So when we engage our stakeholders, it's not that they are giving us a path and giving us, you know, the plan of what we're going to carry out, but then how does that align to the goals that we have that are driving the decision-making of the school district? So, I want you to go to page two. And I'm going to take you through a quick self-assessment. And this is where I really value hearing from you when we hit a particular topic. This is going to be Roles Responsibilities, this particular document, and we're on page two. And I'm going to walk you through and value your feedback as we begin. So, do you have a strategic plan or do you have goals as a Board that drive your decision-making? That helps you understand what's being carried out in the day-to-day operations of the school district? Okay, all right, so note to self, that's really, really important. Oftentimes, that absence of an understanding of where is the administration is trying to take the district, in other words, day-to-day operations, what is our ultimate goal? I used to always say that as a Board member. I want to know what the target is, so that when initiatives, strategies, scores are being shared with us, what I expect you to be able to do is look at your superintendent and say, "How are we responding to this?" So when you receive your NSCA scores, you receive the MAP data, you receive ACT scores, and let's say hypothetically, I don't know what your scores are, but hypothetically, let's say that we are not enamored with where our ACT scores are. So, what are we doing to work on? What are we doing day-to-day? Our goals help us to understand where our administration is leading us. So our mission, go, Mike.
So, what the Board's goal would be, just to raise our ACT scores? And that would be up to the administration to come up with a plan to do that?
Absolutely. And then what they do is then, when you have goals in place, strategic plan, goals, doesn't matter which it is, you tie your board meeting agendas to those goals. And then you're able to monitor the progress, success of those goals. Because what they're bringing to you is helping to carry out those goals. So absolutely.
But shouldn't your goal always be to improve your ACT score?
Not necessarily, but what I want to know, in addition to a school improvement plan, by law, you have to have a school improvement plan. And I'm going to assume that periodically, administration brings that to you and they say, "Hey, this is our school improvement plan, there's a progress that we're making," right? So in addition to that, I'm not talking about school improvement goals. I'm talking about independent goals that you've set down with administration and you've developed. In other words, it's that opportunity for you as a Board to be able to express what, you know, where it is that you would like to see the district go. It's the opportunity for administration to say, "Here's where we're at, here's where our targets are." And I'll tell you that the epitome for me is when a Board Administration will have a general goal to improve learning for every student in your district. Now that sounds pretty powerful, and it sounds almost, can we really achieve that? But pause and think about the diversity of the students in your school district. From special needs to those students that fall right in the middle to our high ability learners. Instruction is from our teachers, our curriculum, et cetera, is to move the growth of every child. Whatever that level is, it's not the same for every child. But what you want to know is that from the beginning of the year, when they take their first MAP test, at the end of the year, when they take their last MAP test, how they've moved the needle. And for you, that's ultimately the best outcome, right? Because that's going to be different for every child. For some, it's improving their reading level. For some, it is off the chart. But it's that opportunity to understand, what are we doing to improve learning for kids?
So when you're talking to the goals, the latitude of the goals, are you strictly education? Or what's your breadth of goals?
Not necessarily.
Give me some examples, so I can understand from one end to the other.
And the Board has done a terrific job of planning and prioritizing for facility modernization since I've been here. So, it kept a great document prior to the years that I was here, and prioritizing three different levels and focusing resources on that, and so that's absolutely something this Board can point to on. We've had a plan and we've followed through with that plan to fix this and make that better and that, and so on. So facilities would be a great example outside of academic role.
So it could be facilities. But more importantly, what you need to be certain is, and now I'm really talking in the weeds, but this is your responsibility, that's what you were elected to do. Do we have an adaptive curriculum in every core subject area to support kids as they transition through our school system? So that can be from grade to grade, it can be level to level. If we don't have curriculum, if our curriculum hasn't been aligned to our standards, it's going to result in maybe not favorable scores. Now sometimes our kids are pretty resilient, and in spite of the fact that you don't have that, they'll still do okay. But what you want to know is that that exists. How's that been adopted? Do you have an instructional framework that is in place? How is the professional development that you are providing as a Board that you support, how is that helping our teachers to improve instruction in the classroom? So, the goals, Jim, can be, you know, A to Z. And I'm not asking you to be involved in the day-to-day, but it is important that you understand what it is that the administration is doing to improve instruction and learning for all kids. That's what our mission tells us. Our mission statement is, who are we as a school district? Our vision statement, if we have one, tells us where we want to be. It's where are we going, what do we aspire to take Plankview Public's goals? And your goals, in the absence of goals, here's what happens. We get involved in the day-to-day because we don't know what the overarching target is. When we understand that our board meetings are purposeful and we understand that we're measuring and monitoring the progress of those goals, that pulls us back up to that level that we're, then we're asking those questions like, what is our instructional framework? Where are we at and implementing that? Then measuring the progress once we've implemented those things. Once we've implemented that instructional framework, what progress are we showing as a result of that? What's our return on investment, right? So goals are powerful. It's a purposeful conversation to understand what, you have a brand-new administrator. As he came into this district, what is it that he has seen? I even say that about superintendents as they start anew in a district. They're looking for the curriculum, does it exist? Have you aligned your curriculum? If I ask you that as a Board, do you know if your curriculum is aligned to the state standards?
No, not those standards.
Okay. And understand that that isn't one and done. Because every time the state reviews the MAP standards, the science standards, whatever the case may be, that means that we've got to do a hard pause and we have to allow time for teachers to go back and revisit where we're at. So what are we doing to monitor the progress, the strategies? And when you receive scores and they're not favorable, again, we come back to our superintendent and we say, "What are we doing to respond to this?" We don't know what we don't know. Our charge is though, to make sure that we're moving that needle, that we're making progress. Questions?
How do we start to utilize the goals? Have you ever been like, have you ever done that?
That's going to be something that I advocate, to initiate good goals, that you understand what's happening, is a sit-down with your administration. And start with, where do we want this district to be in the next three to five years? What, you know, how do the changes and the improvements in the facilities? How is that being driven by the education that you're providing? Career courses, college career, preschool, do you have preschool? Okay, great, and is it at capacity? Right? Have you talked, I'm not advocating for this, please don't hear me say this, I'm just simply asking the question. Have you talked about continuing to invest in your early childhood program? To expand it, to add different options to it? Right, how does that impact your facilities, right? Something, how long have you had preschool in place?
That, preschool.
Okay. At least 10 years. Right, at least, all right.
And we've had to make adjustments from year to year if we have two rooms or one room.
Exactly. So what's really powerful for you as a Board, most incredible data that you can look at as a Board is to look, and we're not zeroing this in, we're not identifying students, but here we say this. What is really powerful is to look at the data of students that had the opportunity to participate in that preschool versus students that didn't have the opportunity. And how well-prepared are they when they hit kindergarten? But now catapult to third grade and look at the data, again, of the students that had that opportunity to experience preschool versus the students that didn't, and where are they at third grade? It is mind-boggling. But that's where you have the opportunity to celebrate how you and the Board are investing in the education of your kids. When you friend local services through that early childhood program, it reduces the cost of educating kids because they're coming to us better prepared to be successful learners. Okay? I know I'm talking that 50,000 view, but this is powerful stuff. And this is, this is why we're here, to ensure that kids are receiving a quality education and equitable and quality education in a safe learning environment. How do we ensure that that's happening? Okay? Questions?
I think there's a statement that, you know, we maybe had this, not in the right order, that we've got two great principals right now that have brought ideas to us on what we need and curriculum and programs and sold them to us, and so.
That is very nice.
They maybe didn't start with us that this is what we need, but they brought it to us that this is what we need and we went with that, so.
Absolutely.
You know, I don't know, we set out and made goals, but we worked with goals.
Well, and even do a hard pause and reflect. I use this all the time with my staff. Where were we? And think about, where were we two years ago, where were we three years ago? Where are we? But more importantly, where are we going? And for me, that's what drives me, that's what makes me tick. I want to know what that target is. And then I need to be able to measure to say, "We are making progress" or "We are completely missing the mark." But that allows you to understand what's happening day-to-day in your school system. Through the growth and development of those goals. The other thing that I would say is that opportunity, when was the last time you engaged your community to understand their expectations of the school district? When do we usually engage our community?
Public comment.
Public comment, correct? Right, oh, perfect. When else?
Strategies to do this.
Okay, when else do we do it? We'll stop, we'll do a pause, and we'll address that one. But how else do we, how else do we engage our community?
We can, we can maybe, when we were doing some, we modeling it, you know.
About three, four years ago, we had a community board, large community.
Large community.
And look at facilities and help them strategically.
I mean, I don't know if that's what you're, you know, looking for.
Good, well, usually when we engage our community is when we need something, right? Bond referendum, levy override, variety of different things. But that's usually when we find the need. And what I advocate for you to do is don't wait until you have a need. Build that good, foster that working relationship with your community and allow them to be at the table, express themselves. What you find out is they have a better sense and you're much more alike than you are different. They have a good sense of what you're up against, but it is oftentimes, the best part about it is, is to celebrate the great things that are happening in your school district. And having that conversation, here's what we really like about Plankview schools. How do we make that better? That's your conversation.
So how do we get them started with the vote?
With public? Community engagement, I will say.
In what areas to start?
All. Community engagement should involve, this is Marcia speaking and this is how we operate with the School Boards Association. It's internal and external stakeholders. Your internal stakeholders are going to be your classified staff, all. All of your certified staff. All of your administrators, the Board, and students. I consider students internal. Students from third grade to 12th grade. External is going to be your parents, it's going to be your community members, those that do have kids in the school system, did have kids in the school system, sorry. So empty nesters like Marcia, and/or retired citizens and your business leaders. So basically, everything within the boundaries. You want that, you want to provide that opportunity for them to have a voice. And that's what you're doing through community engagement. You give your stakeholders the opportunity to have a voice. When was the last time you allowed your teachers to have a voice in what is happening in their classroom? How they're prepared? It's not a climate survey, it is, this is what, this is how we have aligned our curriculum. We do have an instructional framework. This is the professional development that we receive. What is our technology program like? What is the greatest student need in your school district? As identified by administration, by your teachers, by you, the Board. What is the greatest staffing? What is the greatest staffing need that you have? What is your greatest facility need? Is it career college readiness? Is it life skills? What is it? Community engagement is that opportunity to hear from all stakeholder groups. And then what's powerful is that you can take that feedback, then build your goals. Then you have a sense because what you... You take that data and we identify needs and priorities as pertaining to your school district. So, it's unique to Plankview. And it's what we receive, do that feedback.
Are you saying you should have some kind of an annual meeting where the public? Or how do you go about that, I guess?
Community engagement, I'm not advocating for you to do that on an annual basis. There are different ways. Some school districts do do a climate survey, satisfaction survey on an annual basis, during teacher conferences, things of that nature. But this is a little bit more purposeful and I would look at a three-year span at minimum and even maximum for that matter because your enrollment will change, your curriculum will change, your needs will change, your facilities will change. There's a lot of moving parts to them. Great question.
And you're addressing why, but you're still not addressing how?
How?
Who?
Sorry?
When? And what do we involve in it?
Okay.
We need to start.
Okay.
Last year, I haven't met with this group yet this year, but I started what I call the steering committee. And Heather and I would have, I think there was about six parents that we brought in or community members.
Yes, very familiar with that stuff.
And we just talked about kind of like what we've been communicating. Last year was a lot of changes or things that we wanted to see, things that we wanted to try. And some of that was just getting a feel or of how that would be received and stuff. So, I guess my question would be, how big do we want to get this group? Because I don't think you want 30 members on it. But trying to get a good range of people on there that can give you good feedback, too, that, you know, because we picked the group and we also don't want it to come across as, well, we picked that so we can get the answers we want.
Absolutely not. I'm going to categorize that a little bit different, Kyle, than what I'm describing here. Advisory committees are powerful because you can vet ideas. You can lay them out there, receive that feedback from your stakeholders and you, the diversity of that group is really powerful for the feedback that they can provide you. I would not go larger than what you described for an advisory committee. That's from my experience. I would not, coming back to respond to what you asked me. We conduct community engagement and the way that we do it, most all of it is done through online surveys. The only actual community meeting is a focus group meeting where you, the board, and administration has the opportunity to identify an exhaustive list of individuals that you wish to involve and attend. Because of COVID, we're providing it as you determine. And then we also invite the community as a whole. So, in other words, you're going to try to generate interest through personal invites, yet you're saying to the entire community, anybody and everybody's welcome to come to this. What we do is we break them into focus groups and you will identify the questions that we use with the stakeholders. It could be, you know, when you think about Plankview Public Schools, where do you see the district in three to five years? What curriculum? What expectations do you have for educating? What do you want your graduates to be equipped with when they leave the school district? If they're embarking upon a career? If they're embarking upon that post-secondary experience? I mean, there's a cadre of different questions that you can ask them. But your community meeting is where you... It's that opportunity for the community to have that voice. We do a parent survey that is separate and in addition to the community meeting. But most all of it, except that one focus group, is all done through online surveys. Every single parent in your school district will have the opportunity to participate. And then we take administration through interview process and they have a form that they fill out. We take each board member through your individual independent interview. And then teachers have a survey that is aligned to the administrative survey. It's basically near images that. Certified or, excuse me, classified staff, they have their own survey. And what we do is we issue the survey to them through their email address. And we give them a 10-day period to complete it. And then we take all of this data from every stakeholder group that I identified. So, students will go as young as third grade and will go as high as 12th grade or it can be only secondary students. It doesn't have to be elementary age. That's up to you. All of that data, we analyze. We tag it. So, what are we learning? What are we hearing? How are our stakeholder groups alike? How are they different? What have they identified? And then we bring that to the board administration. We present that in the form of a needs analysis. And what we advocate for you to do at that point is do not let it die on paper. Either set goals or move it into strategic planning. You can do either or. It's entirely up to you. But we facilitate that process. It is powerful. It is very, very powerful. It is that opportunity to have a point in time that you're saying to your stakeholders, we value your voice and we're giving you that opportunity to have a voice. Other questions?
Do you see a difference in the size of school or the response you'd be up for the community?
No. No. We have worked in school districts that have less than 100 kids to Bellview Public Schools, to Carney Public Schools. It is, I always, like anything, what you put into it, you get out of it. And that's why we give you the opportunity as a board to identify an exhaustive list of business leaders. And I forgot about the business leaders. That can be an independent meeting besides the focus group of the community. It's more career college readiness-type engagement, but it's whatever you want it to be. But that exhaustive list, making sure that the public's aware that you're going to do it and then carrying it out and giving them ample time to respond. You know, we're working with a district right now where you talk about communications. The school district only had 80% of the parents' email addresses. So, communication is going to be a hot button in this, right? And for administration, it was like, well, that's all we have. That's the way it is. Okay? That's where I drew the line and said, no, that isn't okay. It's not okay that we're only hearing from 80% of your parents. We're going to encourage you to go out and inquire those email addresses. So, how long have they operated like that? So, it is, it is powerful. I'm going to tell you, it is very positive. It speaks volumes to your willingness to allow your patrons and your staff to have a voice. And like I said, it's not that they're giving you walking papers and saying, this is what you're going to do. But you're giving them that opportunity to say, this is what's great in our district. This is what I feel I need or what we need to support a quality education.
Do you have samples of those surveys you can take?
I will share those with you should you choose to use the service, but I don't prior to, if that makes sense. It's proprietary information.
Same with focus group questions potentially. Would you kind of get a start? I mean, just be a little primer or something like that.
I totally do. So, our, the questions that we utilize with classified, certified, administration, board, students, those are all, they are set and we don't alter those. Community questions and the parent survey, I give you some latitude with that. And business leaders, that's designed by you. I give you a question bank or you can create your own questions. You don't have to use Marcia's questions. But absolutely, we equip you with all of that.
Do we have to pay for the question bank?
It's part of the service, Jim.
Good.
So, it's part of the service and...
So, are we currently paying for that service or not?
No.
How much is it?
It depends on the size of school district. I'm going to, I'm going to say a couple thousand dollars. And I say that, the reason I hesitate is because we changed our fee schedule this summer. And so, it's based upon your enrollment is how it's based.
You recommend you just do it at one time or do you do it a couple years apart?
I would wait three years before I would revisit it. I don't think it's something we should... It's called survey fatigue and you don't want that with your stakeholders. But it is very, very costly. I will tell you, we've been... Community engagement has been in place for seven years. Strategic planning has been in place for six years. Community engagement is the core of our strategic planning process. It does not mean that you have to go into strategic planning. What I want you to do is set goals of some sort based upon that needs analysis. And it is, we use Qualtrics. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that platform, but it's a common survey platform and it provides us with great graphing. But we go in and we look at every single comment and we tag every single comment. And so, the information, you will have everything that comes as a result of the surveys. But we tag it based upon categories. It could be facilities. It could be curriculum. It could be student behavior. It could be social-emotional learning needs, things of that nature. Okay? Okay. Other questions before I move on? Because we've got, do you want to say it or not? Okay. All right. Policy governance. So, in addition, I mentioned that. One responsibility, hire superintendent. Second responsibility, evaluate that superintendent. I told you that I would address public comment. I'm going to stop because that was a great question and actually... So, you have a document in front of you that I'm only going to reference and it's on public comment. It's entitled...
On the shoulder or is it inside?
It's right here. It's an independent document. And it looks like this. And if I missed anybody, let me know. Got it?
Yep.
Okay. So, the first thing that I'm going to say to you is, in your policy, in your public comment policy, how long does public comment period last?
Five minutes.
The entire public comment period?
No, per person. Per person.
Okay, perfect. How long does public comment period last?
Infinite.
Okay. All right. So, I'm going to tell you that this is just the position of the School Boards Association, but I'm going to advocate for you to have a time limit because when you have 30 people walk in and you set in your policy that everybody gets five minutes, you're going to listen to 30 people, right? Respond to you or contribute. So, I'm going to advocate that you set a time limit. And public comment is not something that you have to provide at every single board meeting. Public comment gives that opportunity for you to hear from your community. And the people behind you, they're going to want to throw darts at me, but I'm going to tell you that we don't engage the public when they address the board during public comment period. We are there simply to listen to what they have to say unless they are addressing personnel, they are threatening, they are belligerent, out of control. And then you have that opportunity to intervene, stop them. When it is a concern, what we want more than anything is we want to make sure that they've connected with whom it is that they should be connecting with. So, if it's related to a teacher, we want to send them back to that chain of command, right? We want them to go back and we wanted to visit with that teacher. If they've done so, next step is going to be who in your district?
Principal.
Exactly, Krista, principal. If they are not satisfied with the outcome of those two conversations, who do they go to next?
Superintendent.
Exactly. And then, if I'm still not satisfied with the outcome as a result of visiting with superintendent, what is my next course of action? And how do they get to the board?
Don't they have to write a... They have to be put on the agenda?
No.
No?
No. It would be a grievance process. So, note to self, what do you have in your policy that enables a patron to complete a grievance to be brought before the board? And then, what is that process once they have completed that form? Okay? So, by law, you have to have a grievance process. Our teachers have a grievance process. That may be in your negotiated agreement. It may be in policy. Okay? Or go? Exactly, exactly. So, public comment. I, the big thing that I say to you as chair, Mike, is making sure that we're consistent in the way that we carry out public comment so that it does not appear that you're wanting to prevent the public from speaking. But that's why I say how much time for each individual, how much time, um, that you will, um, hold the public comment period.
So there's times we get into discussion items and the public has a question or a comment or whatever, can we allow them to speak? Is that, that's a definite no-no?
It's a definite no-no. And because the reason that I say that, hear me say, that's the quickest way you lose control of your meeting, right? They have the opportunity during public comment period to address you on something general or something that's on the agenda. Either or, um, they have that opportunity to do so. If someone comes to your board meeting and they don't live within the school district, but they own land in the school district, do we allow them to speak? Absolutely. They can address the board. Now, there is a caveat to what I just said on public comment because of L B one forty-eight that Pat, it just passed in this last legislative session. And that's going to impact next year how we engage our public when we are in a budget hearing. I'm not gonna go into that tonight, but just know that you're going to be seeing some changes as a result of that.
Okay, but, okay, so we want our student, uh, stakeholders, but then if they have a question when we're making our discussion or whatever, and we don't acknowledge them, isn't that just saying, we don't care what you have to say?
No. It's a meeting held in public, it is not a public meeting. During the public comment period, you've allowed your public to have an audience with the board. They have the opportunity to express themselves and share their viewpoints on an agenda item or otherwise.
So in other words, they kinda need to do their homework ahead of time, look at the agenda.
Correct.
Ask questions from superintendent or whoever.
Have a responsibility to make sure we educate the public much in advance prior to the action of the discussion. Because during that discussion, that's, you know, that's, it happens from time to time, you know, that the discussion happens after public comment, you have to, you know, that might generate a follow-up or question from, uh, you know, the public that's here. So we, we don't try to anticipate maybe they have a discussion.
Oh, of course, no, no.
But. To a certain degree, yeah.
You're supposed to figure out what we're gonna talk about.
Okay, but that's why we provide advance notice to our meetings. And we have an agenda that states, here's what we're talking about at our board meeting, right?
But they don't know what we're gonna say.
No. Okay, so, great, great point. So hear me say, okay, so here's my next question to you. Do you operate by committees as a board?
We have committees, we use them at times.
Okay. So how do you bring information from your committees to the full board? What's your process for doing that?
Be part of the discussion section of our agenda.
Okay.
And then their committee would.
Committee report.
Committee would report to the rest of the board.
Good, 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 okay. All right, so, um, through that discussion, through that presentation, you may receive questions from other board members, correct? And that gives that opportunity for, um, for the committee to be able to say, you're right, we did, we actually did ask that question. Here's what we learned about it. So your job, because then what can happen from committees? I, hear me say, committees are an efficient way to do business as a board. Because it allows, uh, like, I was, love, love, love negotiations, kinda weird that way. I like negotiations. That was my wheelhouse. It was not my wheelhouse on buildings and grants. I didn't care what size engine we put in the bus, right? It just wasn't Harsha. So, it's my responsibility then and how am I sharing out with the board what we discussed in those committee meetings? The other thing is, is that it's important that we're able to, um, have purposeful discussion as a board when we get into our board meetings. So if we are talking about something that our community is passionate about, we have that ability to share through discussion and questions of administration, the, the dialogue of what is it that we looked at? Um, if we were looking at putting up a bus barn, um, what do we talk about? What are we looking at? Do we have a budget for it? You know, that's your responsibility to bring that information into that discussion. That way your public knows that you are being purposeful in how you're making those decisions. Board members, you know, oftentimes I'll use this expression with administration, but, um, what I would entice you or encourage you to think about doing is what question should you be asking the building committee about this bus barn? And what is it that I think that you would want to know? If you have an involved supportive community, allow them to understand the work of the board. But remember, it is a meeting held in public, it is not a public meeting. And so educate your board, educate your community through your discussion, your purposeful discussion. Question?
When is your public comment here on the agenda?
Great question. So usually it's at the beginning of the meeting. Sometimes, in unique situations, if you have a hot topic and you anticipate that there's going to be quite a few people that are interested in speaking, you can add a public comment period at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, but then you've already voted on all your action items and it doesn't make a difference.
Thus, why I advocate for it at the beginning of the meeting. And then, you know, don't leave after you've addressed the board. Stick around and, and, and listen to what the board has to say on that particular topic. The other thing is, this, it's a great opportunity for you to encourage your patrons to connect with your superintendent. If they've got questions, especially questions that we are not equipped to respond to. Um, I'm gonna use this example of, um, like a bond referendum. What we would do is Dr. Ernst would give us X points that we all had the same information, we were equipped to be able to go out and speak articulately about that. Beyond that point, we directed them back to the superintendent and we invited them to, um, receive accurate information from the superintendent. But the other thing that that usually will do is that'll educate you as a board, this is what our patrons are passionate about in relationship to this bus barn, bond referendum, whatever it is. It is that ability to, to educate yourself, but most especially to be equipped to understand, um, what it is that you should be asking. So, that is, that's the other part of it. When you're going into a board meeting and you have questions that you're not able to, um, determine the response to from the packet that you received for your board meeting, the best place that you could go is your superintendent. If you email them, your superintendent, one of you emails and they say, okay, um, here's what my question is. What I want the superintendent to do is I want him to distribute that information to every one of you. So you all have the same information, you're all equipped with the same information. The other thing that that does is that helps him to understand this is what's driving the board. This is the information they need to make an informed decision. Yes?
We've kind of been doing that emails, but we do it more as just a group where we're all on the same emails. So if somebody has a question, it comes to all of us.
Okay. All right, so what I want you to do in that particular situation is, okay, so if, if the superintendent sends you something and he sends out information, I want him to send it to himself and I want him to blind see see the board. And the reason is, is because when you hit reply, um, you are only replying to the superintendent. When you hit reply all and you pose a question, you state a position, you are potentially violating the open meetings law. It's conducting business outside of the public. So I don't want you to do that. I want you to forget that reply all exists and that isn't the best way. Send it to the superintendent, he can distribute information to you, information. But dialogue, questions, things of that nature, you're only sending that to the superintendent so he can equip you. But again, I want you to have that conversation in public because it informs your public. Then your public knows you are asking those questions, right?
The thing is, everybody has to respond.
What do you, what do you mean, Mike?
Well, sometimes not all the board members respond to a question.
That's okay.
So then, how do you know if you've got the majority of them that wanna do so?
You know, we don't, we don't, right?
Not I, but let's say we wanna have a meeting about a situation that's come up. Okay, so he, he sends out an email to everybody, he gets two responses.
Different question.
How does he know whether we should have a meeting or not? Cause it's not a majority.
Completely different.
Right.
Okay, let me, let me isolate that. Yeah, it's absolutely fine for him to say, listen, we need to have a meeting to discuss this. Are you available on June twenty-ninth, June thirtieth, July first?
Then you can send that to everybody.
We're fine. All we're doing is trying to define a time that works for everyone involved. Completely different than saying, will you support me placing this item on the agenda? Now we've just asked you to support or not support. It's pulling the board, we don't do that. Okay, that's a meeting outside of a meeting. We have to be, you know, we have that, um, school email, that's the other thing. If you have a school email address, highly, highly advocate for you to use your school email address for all school business. Do not use your personal email addresses. Because if there's ever a situation where there would be a public records request, um, you're gonna have to go to your boss and say, oh, by the way, I need to turn my computer over, I need to allow access to my work email address, my personal email address, that type of thing. So we wanna use for anything related to the school in your role as a board member, use your school, um, issued email address.
Does that get turned over to any, or does it have to go to a legal person that goes through it?
Public records request is going to start at a high level and they're going to, it's, it's, we only do public records requests is what we're getting into.
So no individual can just come in and say, I wanna see your emails and that?
Um, yeah, I'm not an attorney. I, I would want that one vetted with your school attorney as to how that would happen. But we must always be cognizant of it as a public representative of, of the school district, that we are subject to that. Text messages, emails, all discoverable. You can, even though you delete them, they're still discoverable. And the same thing goes, the same rules as email. We don't get into expressing opinions, support, well, I don't support, or polling one another on how we're going to support. Um, we actually had a board here in the state of Nebraska that, um, really, really abused text messaging and the use of their phone during board meetings. And so much so that, um, there was a cartoon designed, um, saying, wait, I will text you, bye-bye. And then they had a public records request and the text messages before, after the meeting and otherwise, were all printed, um, in a local newspaper. And so make no mistake about it, they are discoverable. Um, and it's, um, less than, this just doesn't reflect well on, on any of you. So be, be cognizant of that, okay?
So when an email is sent out to like to, from an administrator, um, to a board member, should I go to all board members or just one individual?
Now, um, what I like is if, if Mike has a question of the superintendent about an item, I want, he would send that to the superintendent. And what I want the superintendent to do is I want him to share with every single board member his response. Because if it's important to Mike, it's important to every one of you. And what that does is that allows him to understand, okay, there's an angle that maybe he hadn't considered with that particular item. But it equips you so that you all have the same information. Hypothetically, um, I, I use this example. We're going to purchase this ball. And it's a pretty expensive ball. And Mike emails the superintendent, he asks him size, shape, color, you know, why it's so expensive, what it's made of, blah, 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 blah. And superintendent shares that with you. But you're the only person to be shared it with. You come to the board meeting and you're like, okay, I, I absolutely support this, you know, given, I know it's expensive, but given its purpose and what it's made of, blah, blah, blah. And the other board members are looking at it and you're going, wait a minute, how did you, how did you know this? Right? And so always, always, um, I say to protect the superintendent. If it's important to you, chances are it's probably important to somebody else. And that's his ability to equip you so that when you come to the board meetings, if he's asking you to make a decision on that item, it helps you to make an informed decision. If you come, if you come to the meeting and, and Mike is able to state these statistics, there may be somebody else at the table going, wait a minute, I think I need to ask more questions. I don't feel like I'm equipped to make an informed decision. And you may say, I'm going to ask to table this until a particular board meeting. Or you may go, no, because you don't feel like you have that information. And what a disservice if you don't have the information, one, you didn't ask the question, or two, you're feeling that you don't have the same information as another board member. And so that causes you to pull back and say, listen, I, I just don't feel that I'm comfortable with this right now. And I want you to be able to make that informed decision. And I, at the beginning of this meeting, I asked you that, what do you bring to the board? So, I know this is gonna surprise you, but for me, um, one of my gallows strengths is input. The more information I have, I, I need as much information as I can, right? That's just who I am. So I'm gonna barrage the superintendent with questions. Well, I'm not going to come to the meeting and barrage the superintendent with all these questions or the administration. It's gonna be my responsibility to do my homework, ask these questions to enable them to understand what's going to be important that I bring to the table. Well, I can go through Marcia's list and I can, I can check five boxes. That information I fully intended to share and equip the board with. But you know what? She asked two questions, had occurred to me. So that's what makes me tick. But it's that information that can make the difference for you in your ability to support or not support that issue when it comes time to cash your vote.
So you just use my name as an example?
I'm only picking on you.
Only, yeah, that's fine.
I'm so sorry.
But any board member could do that same thing.
You're spot on, absolutely. The superintendent serves each individual board member. He has a board of six. You are six individuals who serve as his boss, right? Absolutely. Beyond, the difference between you, Mike, as board president, having did that for ten years, is that you're a direct conduit to the other board members. And yes, sometimes you may come into information that's different than what the rest of the board is receiving, but ultimately at some point, the rest of the board is going to be equipped with that same information. It's that opportunity, you know, I, I was that, that emergency, here's where we're at, Harsha, what do we do with this? Okay, Dr. Ernst, I'm, I'm contacting, um, the rest of the board, I'll pass it on. And then he's gonna follow up behind me and he's gonna send you an email, a memo, something to share, you know, an update on what that situation is.
But you gotta be really careful because you just talked about two scenarios, one we can do and one we can't do as a group.
But I'm not asking for a response, I'm only informing. There's a difference. When I'm seeking support and understanding, if you do support, then we're circumventing because we're pulling. We're trying to find out if you're a yes or a no. It makes it here on the back of my neck to stand up when I get that call, the board president. Well, call all the board members and here's what they said.
So then that should come from the superintendent if we need to have a, a meeting for some reason. Very early, you might talk to me, but then it, it should come out from you.
Mike, it's okay if you would call them and say, listen, we've got a situation, we are going to have to have a meeting. Are you gonna be available on this night? There's a complete difference between, we're gonna be talking about this issue, do you support it? Don't you support it? Completely different, right?
So with COVID?
Yes.
Obviously we haven't been able to possibly get together anyway, school's been shut down on that. We've had a meeting via Zoom.
Yes.
Is that proper, is it not?
Okay.
What's, what's the right thing to do there?
Okay, why, so the reason that we were able to do that is because the governor had issued an order that allowed us a temporary opportunity as boards across the state to be able to meet via Zoom. That order has sunset, it no longer exists. There is potential discussion that he, he has asked in our phone call that we did last Thursday, he has asked for data, um, from the School Boards Association and otherwise, um, regarding the, you know, the challenges that boards are experiencing. It, like, that's all I get are phone calls of, okay, Marsha, here's where we're at. We don't, we've got one that's got COVID. Maybe we have a quorum of the board that's been exposed. We can't have a meeting. So then we need to talk through, what are we going to do? What I'm gonna say is safety comes first. Even if it's a regular board meeting, I'm going to say, one, you can't meet by Zoom right now because that order's not in place any longer. Um, if you don't have a quorum because so many of you have been exposed, maybe you are all at the same event, doesn't matter, then I'm going to say you're not able to meet until you can bring a quorum to the table to conduct business. So safety comes first. Um, in statute, it will tell you, in your policy manual, it says, when do you meet? Do you meet the second Monday of the month? Okay. Okay. And you must conduct business, hear me say all of this. You must conduct business by the third Monday of the month. But if we simply cannot meet, um, we're gonna have to delay until we can meet, until we can come together at least have a quorum. Um, the other thing that you could do is you could contact your school attorney and say, here's our obstacle, what do we do? You can't have a quorum, you can't have a meeting. It's as simple as that, so. Um, but stay tuned for further developments because potentially, um, the governor may come down with something to support boards that are facing this challenge because it's our reality, unfortunately.
Question about preparation of the agenda?
Yes, yes, yes.
Uh, our, our policy, uh, government has been, superintendent filled that with the. Our, our policy, government N S P, superintendent builds that with the president. So I build it by using previous, those months, those annual items, right? And then whatever is obvious, table from the previous and so on. So how does Mike, because I don't ask the whole board what are you going on the agenda? I build that with Mike. So how can we do that better?
Okay. So the first thing, I'm gonna send you, all of you, the new and improved annual board calendar. And it is inclusive of statute, rules and regulations of what's required and when it's required. So on or before September 1st, in August, you're gonna see that this is a topic that you need to address. It's, it's a really great, great piece. But I would use that as a resource. I edited it with the, with M D E, several different departments. John Spotts has looked at it from the legal perspective, Holby's looked at it from the legal perspective. So it's, it's a great tool to lean on.
Was pushed out of the N S P?
Um, it's actually a full annual, 12-month calendar, just recently updated. We update it every year after the legislature, okay? So that's gonna be one thing. But here's then where I'm going to take you. In policy, what does it say about how you develop the agenda? In other words, how can JAM place an item on the agenda? Does that have to have two board members that support it? Does it, is, does JAM go to the board president and the board president just brings it to the table, discusses it with the superintendent and we determine that it is going to be on the agenda or it's not going to be on the agenda? Because here's the caveat. If JAM walks in and he says, okay, Mr. President, I want to put a coach on the agenda and I wanna discuss a coach or a teacher. That is not a board issue. It is not a board issue until it is brought to you because they have requested a due process hearing, especially if it's a teacher. If it is a concern that you have, you should be going through that chain of command and addressing that as an individual board member. But we do not discuss personnel-related or student-related issues as a board in a public meeting unless it has reached the level because of litigation or an issue's been resolved and the superintendent's providing you an update and then that's probably going to be in a closed session, okay? So when you have a policy that states the superintendent and the board president are putting that agenda together, the security net in that policy is that if it's not a board issue and it shouldn't be on the agenda, the superintendent has the ability to say, I will not place that item on the agenda, it wouldn't be proper. Because if we do wanna talk about a teacher, if it's ever appropriate outside of a due process, which I don't know how it would be, or an administrator, superintendent, I'll get to that, then you have to have, you have to notify that individual that you're going to speak about them and they have to give you permission to go in a closed session to talk about them. They can deny you the ability to go in a closed session to talk about them. Questions?
Then you have to talk about it in public.
Correct.
Right?
Spot on. That is the challenge, you are spot on.
You can't go in a closed session to talk about a situation involving personnel, then it has to be put in the public.
But usually, the only personnel that you're discussing as a board is your superintendent, okay? And then I'm going to take it a step further. When we're discussing the superintendent, it's going to be related, chances are, 99.9% of the time, it's going to be his evaluation. And the only reason you go in a closed session to discuss your superintendent's evaluation is if you have something that would harm his reputation and then you still have to ask his permission for him to allow you to go in a closed session to discuss that. And if he does not grant it, we're having that conversation with the question.
By whose opinion that it could harm his reputation? His, mine, theirs? I mean, that could be, that's very opinionated.
It is, but that's, that's the reality of it. So you have summary course. Mike, you through policy have the ability to contact your school attorney. So only the board president and superintendent can do that. But Mike could contact the, the school attorney and say, we would like to go into closed session, here's why we're gonna go into closed session, and they can help you determine if it's appropriate, if it's not appropriate. The best rule of thumb when it comes to closed session, and I'm not talking about superintendent when I say this, the best rule of thumb when it comes to closed session is just because it makes you uncomfortable to have the conversation in public does not constitute or validate going in a closed session. Does that make sense? Okay, what other questions do you have? Do you have questions?
Well, back to getting something on the agenda, you said, I don't think you ever answered that, doesn't it take two people?
Um, I don't know what your policy says, Mike.
So it could be different.
Yeah, you can, every district's a little bit different and...
Person's request in place and adding on the agenda must make a request to the superintendent, assuming person's is anybody stakeholder or a board member. That person making that request must state the person's name, purpose of the presentation, action desired and pertinent background information. Adding such requests will be at the discretion of the superintendent after consultation with board president. Tentative agenda supporting document service sent to board members three days prior. So that's, that's all we have in policy, which comes from N S P. You know, on that, and so that's what I base, you know, consultation with the board president. I've never, to my knowledge, never had a personal request outside of board place an agenda item. Board members have maybe requested to my cave, this is maybe something we should talk about, but then, you know, he makes that clear to me.
Still, you're gonna discuss it between, yes. And so that's, that's what I would do is if, if a board member has an item that they wish to have placed on there, they would, they could bring it to you. And then as long as it's not an administrative issue and it is relative or appropriate for the board to discuss, that's how it would be placed on the agenda. But make no mistake about it, if it's not, if it's an administrative issue, then your superintendent's gonna pull back on that one. And, and the, and the reason I like that is because it, I can be that board member where I wanna talk about that coach and I'm gonna push this issue, right? And I, somewhere, somebody's gotta be able to say, that's an administrative issue, we cannot go down this radical. Okay? Other questions? Yes.
I see our local newspaper earlier, back there, K Notes.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure this is on my, and, and when is it appropriate for the press anyway to ask questions? Is it public comment? Is it, who, who's supposed to, I mean, how is he supposed to ask questions?
He, well, he, he might ask questions in between meetings.
In between.
But he doesn't have any other, he, he has no authority to interrupt your meeting and ask questions. It's a meeting held in public, it is not a public meeting. He can address the board during public comment period. He may contact the superintendent, he may ask questions of the superintendent.
So are we, not trying to pick on you, but if he calls one of us and asks us, are we supposed to chain of command him?
Okay. So rule of thumb usually is your superintendent is your spokesperson on behalf of the district. So you're gonna send them here if it's, if the question is relative of that. The board president is the spokesperson of the board. So be mindful of what the question is that's being asked and who's the most appropriate. And don't ever be afraid to say, I don't know, you need to call the superintendent. That's a great question, great question. Other questions? Do you need a break?
You probably do.
I'm, no, I really didn't, I needed a break. No, I'm, I'm good. You're being very gracious with me because I know that I talk a lot. Other questions about public comment? Public comment is just simply to allow, the board meeting is a meeting held in public, it allows our public to listen and observe the board at work. They cannot interrupt your meetings. You can go as far as calling someone out of order if they interrupt your meeting, if they have side conversations, you can do a hard pause, get a gallon.
They're afraid I might throw it in.
Okay. So however, you can get their attention and say, we're gonna ask you to take your side conversations out of the hallway to be respectful of that you're interrupting the, the work of the board. If, like, I had a call today on the way here and they have an individual that is taking issue with decision that the board's going to make this evening. And you can only imagine what that's probably about. And the board president fully anticipates that this individual's going to grandstand and interrupt. We have the ability to take a break. We're going to take a quick recess, two minutes, three minutes, whatever it is. You're going to remind the public, this meeting's held in public, it is not a public meeting, we will not tolerate interruptions. And when we take that recess, you scatter like bees, you do not puddle, don't talk about school business. You come back, remind the public that you're not going to tolerate interruptions. If they continue to interrupt, you can have them removed from the meeting. Not going to be on the Christmas list, be prepared for that, but that's, it is the reality, right? Okay. So nothing else about public comment, I'm gonna keep going. So we talked about policy and in the very beginning, I talked about the importance of policy. Is policy on your board meeting agenda? We're still on page two.
Oh, we just opened up number two.
It's okay, it's okay, it goes back. You review policy, nice, that is so great. Policy, policy, policy. You've heard me already a few times tonight say, what do you have on policy? Note to self, check policy. So, so true. Lots of times a superintendent calls me, I will say, what do you have on policy? A board member calls me, anybody can call me, it doesn't have to be just the board president, not just the superintendent. You are our membership. And so oftentimes I'll say, what do you have on policy? Policy mirrors your handbooks, your handbooks mirror policy. Policy is like watching paint dry, it's so incredibly important to what your administration does every day. It's the policy you give them the authority to carry out the day-to-day operations of your school district. And that's where we do a hard pause. Here's an example. It's not unusual in the winter months, January, February, I might get a call from a board member and they'll say, so, Marsha, we're hiring a new principal and superintendent would like to promote from within. And I just, you know, the board really feels like what the superintendent needs to do is just put it out there, see who applies, you know, that's great if this individual's the best person, but I, I'd really like, you know, to see what we can attract. What am I going to do? I'm gonna circle you back to policy and I'm gonna circle you back to job description. Through the job description, you grant the authority to your superintendent to hire, set programming, curriculum, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'm gonna go back to that, I'm going to say, you've granted the authority to the superintendent to make that promotion from within. So the value, the moral to the story is always review policy and have that opportunity to have purposeful discussion about whether you agree on content, and I'm not saying take authority away from the superintendent, don't hear me saying that. But the point is, is that policy should be your go-to when you have a question. What do we have on policy, right? Okay. All right, we talked about community engagement, accountability and student achievement. I touched upon that briefly and it's really why we're here. We're here to make sure that our kids are receiving a quality, equitable education in a safe learning environment. Aren't we doing that? But more importantly, how are you holding administration accountable for moving the needle and improving education? What initiatives, what strategies? When you receive data, what kind of data do you receive? Math scores, ACT scores, NSCAT scores, probably somewhere within that. But, and here we say this, I do, I never expect you as a board member to interpret data. I am not saying that. But I do expect you to look at your superintendent and say, how are we responding to these? We may, we maybe see growth. And so what, what your superintendent's going to say is, look, two years ago, here's where we were at on our math scores. Here's where we're at now. Change does not come quick enough for board members. I oftentimes talk about that, especially in new board member workshops, where we have that opportunity to, administration comes to us, let me use this timeline. So at the beginning of the school year, in a traditional school year, I can't mistake about it, not necessarily this year. So in a traditional school year, we will begin the year and we have scope and sequence, maybe, in place in which our teachers, a brand new teacher comes into our district and they are an elementary teacher, they have a spoken sequence of what keeps them on track to provide the education, the information that a child needs to be successful when they set for the NSCATs test, the state standard testing. When do our students take the state standard test, tests? In the spring. So we go through the school year preparing for this, and I'm not saying that that's the only thing your school district is, is teaching, it is not. They teach them much more. But the point is, is that that is our goal. We do have, our, our students have to take the NSCATs test and it is important, the results of that. Here's another question for you. What is your AQUEST classification for each building and the district? And that's okay, okay. What is your, it's okay, it's all right, right? Your AQUEST classification. So what that is, is it's going to be excellent, great, good, needs improvement. Each building has a classification, the district has a classification, okay? Now, we're in a unique year because those classifications are carrying over from last year. We didn't take the NSCATs test last spring, remember, we went remote. So whatever your classifications were a year ago, that's what you're operating over this year. But there's another great question when it comes to our student accountability and performance because their performance contributes to that score. So each of your administrators fill out a survey, an evidence-based analysis, send it into the state, superintendent fills one out based upon the district. And then you are given a classification and you would know if you were, probably needs improvement, but you can also go on the Department of Education's website and you can pull up your classifications. So good, okay. So if that means it, yes, fine, go ahead.
At one time, the state standards seemed like they kept changing them, I think, four years ago.
You're spot on, they do.
And there was really no comparison from one year to the other because they made some changes. So how do you know where you're at when the standards change all the time and aren't comparable?
Okay. So in policy, here's a question for you, and this may be note to self. Do you have a curriculum review policy on the books? Meaning, when they review the standards, how often are you reviewing your math curriculum? And it's not the board that's review, reviewing, it's probably... And it's not the board that's review, reviewing, it's probably a curriculum committee made up of teachers and administrators. And so, we're getting ready for the science standards, they're going to be changing the science standards. So, what happens is your teachers then, once they pass those new standards, I talked about this in the beginning, then they're going to take your curriculum and they're going to look at the new standards and they're going to say, "How well does our curriculum, how well, the things that we're teaching in science, how do they align to the new standards?" That's where we're aligning our curriculum to the standards. And you're right, they change. So, I like to have boards have a curriculum review policy. It's a safety mechanism when it's in policy. It ensures that your district is reviewing curriculum on a cycle, on, in a methodical basis. If you don't have one, strongly, strongly advocate for it. Okay, so with that being said, that, that ensures that you're also building time into your calendar for the teachers to say, "Okay, we have new science standards and so we need to review, make sure it's aligned. Look at our scope and sequence, do we have scope and sequence in place to support our teachers to ensure that they're staying on track throughout the year and providing the instruction that kids need to be successful on the test?" Does that make sense? Okay, did that answer your question? Okay, so, now, I'm going to go back to it. We start the school year and we begin instructing our kids, preparing them to take the test in the spring. Okay, so, March, April, late March, April, they take the state standards tests. When, Dr. Ol, are you receiving the results of those tests? In the fall, so, okay, so, pause and let's reflect. In 1920, we're not a traditional year, just work with me here. The beginning of the school year of the 2019, 20 school year, our kids begin receiving instruction to prepare them to take the tests in March and April. The results of those tests are not going to be received until the fall. And they're embargoed, you probably have heard that term before, right? And you're not going to receive that information till about November, December, right? Okay, now, remember, when did they take the test? Last spring, right? Okay, so, administration's going to come to you and they're going to say, "Here's the results of our tests, this is how our kids performed." Now, they may say, "As a result of those tests, we've got to continue to work on providing better supports for math." I'm going to pick on math. I have no idea what your scores are, I'm going to be hypothetical. So, in January, February, administration comes to you and they say that we want to change the curriculum. We want to introduce new strategies, interventions to help kids in their math scores. When did they take the test? Last year in the spring. So, January, February, you say, "Spot on, we support you, go forward." So, we order the new curriculum, we order the intervention, the strategy, we've got to train staff. If it touches kids that year, great. Chances are, it's going to touch kids the next school year. So, think about how long it takes us to respond to when they take those tests, when we receive the results, and how we're going to respond to them. Change for you as a board happened when you took the vote and said, "Yes, do it."
So, each, each group of kids could be different. You can have one group come through that just bombs and the next group excels on the same program. Do you change your whole program for that?
No, but that's, but that's the value of asking the question. How are we responding to this? Do we need to pull the rug out from under the reading program? No, we, we, chances are, we're not pulling it out just because we had some kids that didn't perform well. It could be a group of kids, it could be a variety of things. Maybe we just implemented a new reading program. We haven't had time to build into that. I've got a great scenario that I use where the board, they implemented a new reading program, three years pass, not seeing the results they want, board goes into the board meeting and pulls the reading program. Administration's going, "Whoa, whoa, 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 we have not implemented it at the level that it needs to be." Okay, why aren't you communicating that to the board? So, we got to break down the communication and, oh, by the way, we need more resources to implement it 100%. Again, how did you communicate that to the board? And there wasn't communication, so what the board did out of frustration, they yanked the program and they got rid of it. That's really unfortunate. But, so, when you have goals, when you implement a new strategy, you implement new curriculum, you need to receive periodic updates, that annual work calendar, you need updates on what's the progress that's being realized. Or, we're not, we're not realizing progress, so what is administration saying we need to do in order to move the needle? It's holding them accountable, right? That's what you're here for.
More as much talking about it than necessarily making the change.
You're darn right, you're darn right. But this is where you receive direction. You know, they're, they're the experts on education. But they're only as good as your willingness to say, "Are we monitoring? Are we remaining engaged to understand? When we make a decision, when are you going to come back to us and give us an update on the progress?" And too often, that's what happens. It's gone, it's forgotten. We did it. And it's their responsibility to continue to remind you, remember, we implemented the new curriculum. It's only been in place for a year and a half, two years. We, we anticipated this. Or, we ran into some obstacles. You don't know what you don't know. And so, they need to let you know, this is not going the way that we had hoped that it would. Pardon me, go ahead.
You could have a whole half a new board by the time the results come in. That has no idea what you did in the past.
You're spot on, you are spot on.
So, it gets forgotten.
That's right. Yes, I know, I, it, it's, it's a lot.
It can, yeah. Is it okay if we dismiss Kelly? I mean, I can take the motion, the final motion, unless this is riveting for you. But I'm a good family and such, and we intend to burn the midnight oil.
She wants to hold the...
Actually, I'll hold you, you guys are drunk, I've got anything else.
Are you guys okay with that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. When, when she said, "Dr. Ol, do I really have to come to that?" I think I should have been there. I guess she didn't say that.
Sorry, that's Mark. Oh, no, 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 thanks for being here.
You're probably a slave to work tomorrow.
It's payroll, I gotta be here early. People are waiting on me tomorrow.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
All right. All right, advocacy. So, this is, this is a tough one, I'll be honest with you, it's a tough one. Okay. So, I'm in a board operations, I'm going to address. Okay. All right, and keep, keep them coming if you've got anything, okay? All right, so advocacy, the board advocates for children of public education. What is your working relationship with your state senator? Do you have one? And I'll be honest with you, this was not my will house, it became my will house. I was board representative in this capacity. Senator Raves, I don't know if any of you, I mean, you're so young, you probably don't remember Senator Raves. But Senator Raves, he knew all the question, he knew the answer to the questions he would ask you. And it was, it was, it was painful. But he, phenomenal individual, just such a great, great guy. But the point is, is that if you don't, as a board, have that connection with your state senator, you are remiss in being able to articulate how potential legislation could harm you or could, how you should be advocating for that, for the support of legislation that could impact you in a positive way. So, what's your option enrollment and out? Is it high or is it...
More than...
We're underwater.
You're underwater on that, so you have more going out than coming in. So, this is going to be a hot topic in the next legislative session. And Senator Gironi is coming after school districts that have high option enrollment. So, there's a great example of, now, in your situation, it's probably, it could be to your advantage possibly. But just understand that, understanding what's coming down the pipeline and being able to articulate to your community what you're up against and how legislation aren't you, it's important. And figure battles, I get it, there's a lot of other things going on. But if any of you are passionate about that, I would encourage you to contact Colby Koash. He's phenomenal to work with. He's our new associate exec. And he was a state senator, for those of you, the name sounds familiar. And he has really upped the game in working with our members and engaging them. So, if you have passions that way, or if you want numbers, data, to support your discussion with your state senators, Colby will put that together for you. Just let him know. He will come and present it to you and equip you to be able to have those conversations, so. Okay, all right, we're going to jump to district resources. I'm only going to spend a few seconds on this one. And the thing that I always say to the board on this one is, think more dollar, beyond dollars and cents. Think of your facilities, think of your staff as a resource. How are you using your resources to the best potential that they provide you? Meaning, if you look at how your teachers go back to school in the summer and maybe they are now endorsed in other areas, how do you put those dollars and cents that when they're moving on salary schedule, how are you in using that to your advantage in your school district? Can you add curriculum? Can you revisit your curriculum, class offerings, things of that nature? So, okay, all right. So, okay, now, we're going to dig into board operations. This one talks about how we conduct ourselves in our board meetings. And early on in the, in the meeting tonight, I said to you, "How do you communicate with your public?" One of the most prevalent ways that you engage and communicate with your public is through board meetings. That, that tells the public what you're doing to drive education on a day-to-day basis. Again, I talked about your goals and tying your goals to your agenda items, discussion items and action items allows you, as a board, to monitor the progress of your goals. It allows you to understand, do you spark these? You do not, okay, all right, so just ignore that question. So, but your board meetings do that. And I will always say that if you cannot tie the discussion item, action item, back to a goal, it may not be a board issue. It may be an administrative issue. So, think about that and how we define our agenda. How do you, in your board meetings, in any agenda that you look at, what is the impact of your vote on instruction and learning? How are you improving instruction as a result of your board meetings? How are you improving learning opportunities for kids during your board meetings? So, do a hard pause, go ahead, Mike.
What can you add, goal? I mean, obviously, you can add goals along your own. Something comes up and you need to work on it, we add it as a goal and then we start working on it. And you don't have to sit down in a meeting and say, "Okay, these are our five goals for this year." They pop up at any time.
The only thing about that is when you're not organized, you're not being pro, if you, when you don't have goals, you're not being proactive, you're being reactive.
Right, but I'm not saying not having any goals, but I'm saying, but they, they can change. They are not change, but you can add to them.
Spot on, spot on, they're never going to be in stone as is. Even a strategic plan, I will tell you, there's going to be moving parts. You're going to run into obstacles and you're going to say, "Hmm, do we have to modify this? We didn't anticipate this and we need to address it." You are absolutely spot on. But I, but I am going to advocate for it to be formalized. When it's not written down, it's out of sight, right? It doesn't happen, that's exactly right. And so, I, I really, really advocate, and then I believe you're being proactive, not reactive. Really good point, I appreciate you saying that. Okay, so, through our board meetings, we do a hard pause. Every board meeting, you could do a pause at the end of the meeting. "I don't want you talking about something that's not on the agenda." Oh, okay, so, do you have on your board meeting agenda, an item such as board information, board questions? Anything like that?
Don't really have it on the agenda, but a lot of times, I'll ask at the end of the meeting if anybody has anything. Just bring it up or whatever, but it's not really on the agenda.
Okay, and I'm going to ask you to stop doing that. Because that, that allows us to go down that rabbit hole where all of a sudden, we're talking about something that's not on the agenda, okay?
We've never had anybody respond.
Good, yay, good, okay, next.
I just want to go home.
You just shorten your meeting. Okay.
Then I can say, "Well, I tried."
That's what you were saying as we were going out the door.
Okay, so, when can you rescind a motion?
I'll try to, try to call the question.
Give them a second.
Well, we're going to rescind.
So, if somebody makes a motion, have them a second.
On a, on a motion that's to rescind, yes. This is where the board has taken action. We can rescind a motion. So, let's say that in our board meeting, the superintendent, we are discussing a new security system. And the board votes, they approve, we go on with life. COVID happened, ooh, golly, remember, we did that last year? We, we had that motion and we approved a new security system and then we went remote and the bottom fell out. Okay, we haven't done anything with it, in other words. I haven't signed a contract, I haven't moved forward to instigate, you know, purchasing this new security system. Superintendent could come back to you and say, "Listen, I found a better deal. We can save some money here." As long as he has not put into play the authority that you granted to that motion, you can rescind it. And there's no statute of limitations on that.
So, how do you, how do they have to make a motion?
So, you put a motion on the agenda to revisit the security system motion. I would state what month it happened in, what the vote was. I would want the prevailing side to introduce, you know, move the motion, second the motion. And then you would vote to rescind and then you would go a different direction. Now, can I reconsider? Can we, as a board, reconsider a decision that was made in a board meeting? Yes, as long as it is before the meeting is adjourned. And it must be the prevailing side that introduces to reconsider. And they call it a hasty decision. Made a hasty decision, we want to revisit this, okay? Can I change my vote ever? And if so, when?
Before the meeting's over.
Pardon me?
Probably before the meeting's over.
Actually, it's before the board president announces the results of the vote. So, motion carried six oh, at that point, I could, I could, you know, step in and say, you know, chair, I would like to change my vote. As long as he has not announced the outcome, okay?
So, am I supposed to state the vote by four, two?
Yes, 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 especially when you do not have a six oh vote. You're going to want to state out loud the outcome of the vote. And if anybody voted nay, you will state their name for the audience.
So, I normally open the meetings and stuff, that's the only time we just nay, yay on all our action items, it's individual votes.
It's a roll call vote, action is a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Right, but you're allowing your, each board member to vote.
Right.
Okay, good, right.
But on, just open the meeting and that kind of stuff, we just do yay, nay. So, I mean...
But you're still doing yay, nay.
But do I have to say?
You should do, always do a roll call vote.
Should always do it.
The only time that you can do a ballot vote is when you... The only time that you can do a ballot vote is when you elect officers. Secret ballot, only time. If you are appointing someone, you cannot go into closed session and you cannot do secret ballot.
So even though we just opened the meeting.
You can't do an all-in favor, just to, you know, opposed to roll call?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna be a stickler for detail. Now, John and I could stand here and he could say, well, Marcia, roll call, oh. Doesn't have to be roll call. And I'm gonna say, always be cognizant of your audience. Can they hear? Can they see? Can they read what's transpiring? So if I can't hear, am I able to see it so that I can read the progress of what's happening in the meeting? If I am not able to read it, can I hear?
Or if there's no vigilance.
Then you don't worry about it. But I still always, always keep in mind, you must follow procedures, proper meeting procedure, whether there's anyone sitting out there or not. And here's my example. We had a board that they were gonna go into closed session. There's nobody here. There's nobody here. We'll go into closed session. We went into closed session and they came out and they didn't note and they had, they had a complaint filed against them and they were found at fault. Understand that you must follow those procedures. Okay? Any other questions about the actual conduct of the meeting? Any scenarios?
So, were you gonna say we should have it on the agenda if there's any more, anything anybody wants to say?
No, 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 no.
We should not have.
Do not put that on.
I know, he said I shouldn't say, but I didn't know it should be on the agenda.
You shouldn't say it and you shouldn't allow it. If it's not on the agenda, it is not a topic of discussion. Another, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My question kinda relates to that or public comment, I guess.
Okay.
Is it appropriate for the board to ask questions of the public if there happens to be like an expert or someone who would know about the situation?
No, no.
Have any, any, any interaction with the public?
No interaction with your public.
Can the superintendent?
No. I, you're probably.
Well, I've been asked about it during the meeting and I, and nobody can ask any questions.
He might ask a question of administration, but I wouldn't expect that unless it's a staff member, then I could see the superintendent engaging the public, but I wouldn't find it to be appropriate. Now, I'm gonna get in my car and I'm gonna go home and you're gonna do what you're going to do. Superintendent may ask a question of it, but I caution you as a board in doing it because it, you're, you, you might do it under one circumstance, but you not, may not do it under the next circumstance. You still are inviting and engaging the public in an inappropriate manner. It's, it's how we lose control of our board meetings, right? And where we get our information is through our superintendent. Now, there may be great experts in our community that we wanna tap into that, but that's where direct those questions, those inquiries to your superintendent, and they may, they may, you know, turn to my caring and say, hey, you know, so we've got a question on this. And we would appreciate your, your feedback, but I've seen situations, one in particular that I think about as you're saying this, that it just, you know, it's, it's, it's that door that you step through and you can't, you can't back up once you do. So we had a situation where this district, they were going to put in, I think it was like a wrestling room, and I happened to be observing the meeting. And they had, they had sought quite a bit of information from the superintendent to bring to the table for the board to consider, not through committee, but at the board table. And they had some board members that didn't agree with what was unfolding. So they sought out their own experts and then they utilized the public to discredit the information that was being brought before the board by the superintendent. And, you know, what, the message that you just sent to your public is, you know, we don't have confidence in what our superintendent is doing. And it doesn't mean that you can't bring experts in an appropriate setting to a committee, I mean, again, a whole nother scenario, but to do it during the board meeting, I, I wouldn't advocate for you to do that. Here, another great example. Let's say that you've, you've had, we've been looking at changing the grading system at elementary level. This is, I lived through this scenario, so this one's really real for me. And we had a committee, an advisory committee, and advisory committee always advises the superintendent, not the board. The reason for that is, when you appoint an advisory committee and they are advising the board, the advisory committee must then follow the open meetings law. They have to have advance notice of a meeting because they're advising the board. They have to have an agenda, they have to have minutes, et cetera, et cetera. So the advisory committee would advise the superintendent. You know, board members on it, committee members, teachers, principal, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? So advisory committee had studied different options for changing the grading system at elementary level. This may surprise you, but there were some teachers that didn't agree with the outcome of this advisory committee. So, the meeting comes to pass, we're going to vote on the grading system. Teachers contacted said board member and said, mm-hmm, not good, not good. So what happens is, in the meeting, we did not engage our public, we did not engage our staff. And what happened is, as we're discussing it at the board meeting, said board member who had been contacted by the staff turns to the teachers that are sitting in the audience and said, so tell us how you feel about this. You know, we, we've heard from this committee, I mean, it was a train wreck, you know, and undermine the work of, you know, I had that opportunity to always vote no, but to undermine the integrity of the process that we as a board agreed upon, for studying this issue and learning from our experts, you know, it, it comes down to our vote. But what that did there is discredited the committee. It created a lot of divide in the building. It was, it was tough. We had actually two elementary buildings in our district. So, there's my example of not a good setting. Okay? Other questions? That was a great question. Okay. All right. I'm gonna move into, unless you need a break, I'm gonna move into board superintendent relations. And, or board superintendent relations, but I, this is really about how we operate as a board collectively, but most especially, how our working relationship with our superintendent will trickle down to our administration, will impact our teachers, will impact our students, and of course, then our community is also talking about what's happening at the board table or not happening at the board table. So, social media, it can oftentimes be a way for us to communicate great things that are happening in our school district, but it can also be that place where I, as a board member, I can go out and say, here's what I think about this. So the, the one thing that I wanna say to you about social media and/or, the board meets, the board votes, and we have to agree to disagree. And let's say that I'm not on the prevailing side. When we walk out that door, I still have to support the majority of the board. The board spoke, right? And I may not always be on that opposing side. There may be that day where I'll be on the prevailing side and there'll be somebody else that disagrees. We, we had that board member on our board. The individual would always step back, push back from the table and play a torture stuff. Or, you know, just, you know, constantly that, not willing to step up and take responsibility. Our one vote is a result of our community saying, we want you representing our students. Because when we, when we seek election to the board, we may, you know, you, some of you shared, you know, I, I did this because I wanna get back to the community. Sometimes that's not always the reason why people seek election to the board, that's just the reality of it. What's important is that we understand what it is that they're passionate about. But at the end of the day, congratulations, you were elected to the board. But now you no longer just represent that sector of the community, you now represent all students, all patrons. But most especially, you represent students. And your votes should reflect your support of educating the students in your district. And so that's a pretty darn important vote that we cast. So now, I'm gonna go out and I don't agree. And I'm gonna go on social media and I'm going to say, I don't agree. The actions of one board member reflects on all of you, not just the individual that spoke out. So, I'm gonna use an example of a true scenario that, that happened this year. So I had, you know, the, the covid issue, I know this isn't going to come as a surprise to you, but the covid issue has been somewhat of a polarizing issue in some districts. And when, when boards pass the resolution to empower our superintendent to make decisions and work with the board president, in some situations, this one particular situation, the board president assumed an authority that was not granted through that resolution. And then this board president felt that they had been empowered to call the shots of what administration was doing, what they weren't doing. And here's my example. The superintendent had decided that all staff would work remotely. That meant administrators, everything. The board president didn't agree with that and felt that the administrator should be in the building. The board's, or excuse me, the superintendent said, I don't agree with this, I don't think it's in their best interest. They can perform their jobs, I'm giving them the authority to do this. So we're gonna fast forward and we get to graduation. The board president is allowed to give a speech at graduation. So, at the podium, goes out and through graduation, no one had vetted the speech, they had no idea what was going to be said, discredits administration, discredits grad, um, college and tells them, don't waste the money, you're just gonna go into debt, it's not worth it. Just, I mean, it is not representative of the board. And so, a board member contacts me the following Monday and said, we've got a train wreck on our hands, what do we do? This board president had done this. And the, the conduct of a board member is unbecoming of all of you, not just the individual, is really what it boils down to. So always be mindful that although we are a board, although I am an individual, I still represent the board as a whole. And so what that board did is they, they had written an opinion to the newspaper and then had it put out there that this individual's viewpoints did not reflect that of the full board. They struggled, they really struggled. That's one incident. You know, I can, I could stand here and tell you a lot of them. Social media, we have policies that govern how our teachers utilize, can utilize social media. We need to be mindful how our social media, what that says to our public, and that when we take a position, again, it's reflective on all of us, not just on the individual that may be posted that comment. Air your differences and try to talk through your differences at the board table. That's healthy, that allows us, it allows us that opportunity to express ourselves. And then, at the end of the day, our code of conduct, which is usually a policy, our code of ethics, reminds us that we have to support the majority, whatever the majority said. But make no mistake about it, there, there are going to be those times that we do struggle. But how can we hold ourselves accountable? We hold ourselves accountable from the work that we're doing. Our code of conduct allows our board president, and we hope that it's not the board president that's doing it, in the scenario that I just described to you, it was the board president. But when, when a board member steps out of the lane into the weeds, they do something like that, that violates our code of conduct, code of ethics, whatever it is that we have in policy, what I want to see happen is I want the board president to bring that individual in with another board member, could be the vice president, could be another board member, and I want you to attack the behavior and address the behavior with that board member based upon the code of conduct, not attack the individual. And the reason that we have a third party sitting at the table, that enables, it prevents, he said, he said, he said, she said, there's someone else there at the table. The same would be true if you've got a concern with your superintendent. There's two ways that you hold your superintendent accountable. Evaluation, 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 and evaluation. The evaluation process is the ownership of the board. You set the, you, you adopt the evaluation tool and through policy, you define how you evaluate your superintendent. When you evaluate your superintendent, the tool that you use, and make no mistake, the tool that you're using is on file with the Department of Education. Therefore, in order to change your tool, you have to refile the new form that you're using with the Department of Education, and you have to receive approval from the Department of Ed before you can use that tool. And you have to send your minutes to show that you adopted that tool.
So even if you just changed a couple of questions on it, you'd have to get it approved?
You have to have, yes. Unfortunately, here's what happens. I run into this a lot. And we're doing a better job of helping boards to cross their t's and dot their i's and carry out more appropriate and effective superintendent evaluation. Superintendent evaluation isn't about, I don't like this individual, how do I articulate that to the evaluation? Evaluation should be measuring the progress of their leadership. How have they moved the needle on education? Your superintendent is your educational leader. What, how are they engaging in our board meetings? How are you talking about moving the needle on education? So yes, when you modify in the slightest way what you have on file, you have to refile it. But what I find is that oftentimes, when you contact the Department of Ed and you ask them what you have on file and what the board is actually using, they may not be the same. And that's a violation, that's of the rules and regs, okay? Rule ten. So it's important that they give approval to that tool and then you're able to use that. Here's the second thing about superintendent evaluation. What does your policy say? When do you evaluate? What does your contract say about evaluation? So what I mean by that is sometimes in your policy, it will state, we have to, we discussed the superintendent evaluation result in the November meeting, we do it in the December meeting. What does it say? I want you to be in compliance with your own policy, okay? Sometimes, in the contract language, it will sometimes say, you will evaluate in December. So I would say, just be cognizant of what you have in your contract language, definitely know what's in policy so that you're in compliance with the book.
All right, we're, we're going through that right now. In fact, we just had a meeting before this meeting.
Okay.
So, and our policy is kinda vague on what month you do what, yeah, so we are trying to.
That's fine, yep.
We're trying to update that, but we're also looking at maybe a different evaluation degree.
Absolutely.
So, I'm guessing you're saying that there's no way we can get it done for this year's evaluation.
It just depends, Mike. If, if, if you don't have a stipulation that it has to be done in November, it doesn't have to be done in December, we can still make December work. It's just a matter of, once you identify the tool, you don't have to take action on it immediately, all you All you do is forward the tool to Nikki Sharp at the Department of Ed. And she'll say yea or nay, and she'll let you know. For example, the, the evaluation that I shared with you this evening, she's seen it. A gazillion different boards out there are using it. So she'll say, yep, that's great, you can use that. And then what you do is then you adopt it in a board meeting and you send a copy of your minutes to show that you adopted that evaluation tool. And then you may administer that.
Another thing we just found out in our policy is it takes two months to, to adopt it and change the policy.
Correct, yes.
It's going to take two months to adopt it.
But it's not, you, your tool is not in policy.
Okay, but we want to add the policy, what month we're going to, you know, start and.
But you could do that after. I, I probably wouldn't do that now. I wouldn't change that policy at this point. But if you want to shore that up, absolutely. And this is why after the evaluation, or how many times have you said, I don't know that our tool is effective? I hear that from boards a whole good time. We don't have a good tool. How many times do you fill out your evaluation form and you say, I have no idea? I have no idea, this is, this is something that happens on the day to day. I have no idea. Oftentimes, it means it's probably been a while since you reviewed it and updated it. So note to self, we need to do that. So it's only as good as. And then looking at what it is that you're evaluating. Are you holding them accountable to their educational leadership? Or is it more about that individual as an individual and not as an educational leader? And you know, superintendent evaluation, unfortunately, is that negative. It doesn't, it's not supposed to be negative. It's supposed to be, how do we work collaboratively with our superintendent to measure their leadership? And then when we're done, we're setting goals to hold our superintendent accountable for those areas of growth that we identified in the evaluation tool. And then how are they reporting on their progress for those goals? Other questions about that?
So you made kind of before about the superintendent engaging in conversation with the principals at a meeting. So are we as a board, say like we want to set goals and we ask the principals, okay, what, what areas do we need to work at? What, because everyone's that know what the goals need.
Correct.
So can we interact with them at a board meeting? At the table and say, what's your opinion on what we need to do?
I would suggest that your interaction happen in workshops as opposed to a board meeting. A workshop, what that allows you to do is it's a casual setting where you can ask those random questions. You still have to have an agenda.
Still a board, still a whole board?
Yeah, still your board. But it allows you to have that, to ask those questions that you wouldn't, maybe you can't ask in a board meeting. Yes, board members can ask questions of administration when they have a direct involvement with the issue. I don't want to appear that I'm dodging what you're saying. It's, if the intent or purpose is to circumvent what your superintendent has presented, I'm going to say no. You see what I mean? And to engage them, to say, how do you feel about this? You know, we're struggling with this. And you know, as long as that is a mutual agreement that, yes, absolutely. Feel free to openly share with us, I think it's very appropriate. I would say that, that, you know, we did that, but we were also, you know, they were, they were almost coming out of their seats. Like, ask me, ask me. You know, situations like that. But out of respect to the superintendent, I would have never done that to, to one-up Dr. Dan, to, to try to discredit, you know, maybe what he is saying. And you know, every board's a little bit different. It is the board at work. I expect you as the board president to be leading. It's, it's a meeting of the board. Superintendent provides you that agenda and, and what's being brought to you. Information is ascertained through the superintendent, if that makes sense.
So when they give their reports?
Okay, this is a great topic, go down this rabbit hole.
And we can round that back and forth about what they're reporting?
Okay, here's where I really want you to be careful. Because this does, this will trip you up. Give me an estimate of time that you spend on your principal reports. One administrative.
What, each one?
Depends how long wounded they feel like that.
Pardon me?
Depends how long wounded they are that night.
I would say five to 10 on each, each one.
Oh, that's not bad.
Sometimes it's really short, depends on, one more depth.
All right, so here's my example. You know that whatever's on the agenda, that's what, we said to Joe and Josephine Pope, this is what we're going to talk about, right? Okay. So let's say that, do you, in fairness to you, not talking about you like you're not here, do you provide a printed, do you write a report and you submit that report? The board has that before they go into the meeting, right? Okay. So let's say that the, I'm going to say the elementary principal comes to you and she wants to implement a new, a new student discipline program, PBIS or something like that. And so she's put that in the report, she's given you a little bit of background information. And when she goes to present, she just gets barraged with questions about it. Is that item on the agenda? No, it was in a report. Okay, so I'm going to tell you that I believe, this is Marcia speaking, not an attorney, but I'm going to tell you that I would want, it would warrant being an item on the agenda for you to get into an in-depth conversation. Because I, Josephine, I looked at your advance notice, I looked at your agenda. PBIS was not on there. We've just spent 30 minutes talking about when would it be implemented? What grades would it be implemented? How much is it going to cost? How are we going to train staff? I mean, we, we discussed, and oh, wait, this is great. Krista says, I'm going to entertain a motion, let's do it. And we're off and running, right? That wasn't on the agenda. So I want to be really, really careful when it comes to the reports, that if it's something that is that important and warrants discussion, it's going to need to wait till the next meeting and then we're going to put it on the agenda. And then, okay, so what kind of information can she equip you with? It would be appropriate to say to our chair, I think this would be great to have more information about this at our next board meeting, okay? So that is, that is a problem with some boards. They might spend an hour, hour and a half just on administrative reports. And board members can run, and just like that, we can, we can get into some pretty involved discussion. And I'm going to say, hold the phone, that item wasn't on the agenda. And so I just missed out on that as, as a patron, because I didn't know you were impacted by it.
So could they go to the superintendent and say, we have this issue, we'd like to have it on the agenda?
Most definitely, yeah. Yeah, and they'll discuss and, and Dr. Art will say, absolutely, you know, it might be appropriate. Or it's just, that's another thing. The way that your agenda is structured and the background information that's presented to you as board members, it could be an information item, it could be a discussion item, could be a committee item. It could be a recommendation. Are you receiving background information from your superintendent as to, I support this? I don't support this and here's why. What's it going to cost us? How are we going to pay for it? Powerful, powerful background information to help you to make an informed decision.
Quick question on behalf of the press. So the newspaper gets published on Wednesday evening.
Okay.
So I send a, a draft of the agenda. So that hits the paper on, on Wednesday evening, Thursday, general circulation. So that doesn't include, and then, and then the press gets a packet on Thursday after the paper's already been published. So to notify the public of what might be in the principal's report or administrative reports, is that, should that be, since it's not an actionable item?
I wouldn't include it in that. And when does our agenda become official?
I probably didn't ask that as well as my press guy.
No, it's okay, it's okay, all right? So no, I wouldn't.
Just wanted to make sure, yeah, so, you know, we, we have a timeline. Obviously, we can, when the, when the paper gets published, when the meeting is, when the agenda's prepared. And just trying to make sure our public is aware of what will be discussed at that Monday night meeting.
Okay, so a couple of things that come to mind for me too on this. Advance notice that's usually printed in the paper, is it simply what it's called? We're going to hold a meeting on Monday, April 13th at this time, this location. And the current agenda will be kept on file at where, okay? Now, because of LP 148, our regular meetings, we're going to have to provide that in print in newspapers. I think it's four days ahead, don't quote me on that, but I think it's four days. Okay, so that being said, when does your agenda, you receive your packet, when?
Thursday.
On Thursday, and that's a draft agenda. When does your agenda become official?
That's usually the official agenda unless we.
That's how you want it, okay, okay, but.
When it's approved at the beginning of the meeting?
No. It actually is official 24 hours before, right? So if we meet on Monday night at seven o'clock, our agenda becomes official on Sunday at seven o'clock. So up until that point, you do have the ability to modify your agenda. So you could, you could get your packet and you could say, oh, wait, I thought we were going to talk about the bus bar. And that's not on the agenda, oops, error on our part. You contact board chair or you contact superintendent and you say, this wasn't on the agenda. You're right, should have been. And then he would have to provide an updated agenda to all the board and post in the office to make sure. But it would have to be done before seven o'clock on Sunday night if you meet at seven o'clock on Monday night, okay?
So you, can you move agenda items around on the agenda?
You may, in the meeting, you just can't add. Now, there, there is a clause for adding an emergency item. I just say, don't do it. I say, call a special meeting, an item that simply cannot wait until the next regular meeting. You would have a special meeting in the day and I, this is subject to change because of 148. We used to say 48 hours notice. That's subject to change right now. I, I think that if we have to advertise special meetings the same fashion as regular meetings and we, I've not been able to get the senator's office to give me a straight answer on that one, I don't know. But still, you would still be able to have a special meeting to address that item before the next regular meeting. An emergency meeting is where we have a catastrophic event. Tornado comes through, boiler goes down, 40 below, wind chill, whatever. We can't have school, contact your school attorney, we need to have an emergency meeting. And you follow the direction of your school attorney. Okay?
COVID-19.
Yes, yep.
That qualifies.
Right? Now, the big thing is, is that with COVID-19, is that we took some boards, the position of the School Boards Association on this hot topic was the board did not need to adopt, approve, take action on the reentry plan. The reentry plan was presented to the board. But the reason I said, don't take action on it, is that we go back to school and the bottom falls out and we need to adjust. And maybe that's in a positive way. I said the bottom falls out, but let's say that all of a sudden, our measures are working. So we want to return to full learning. I don't want the administration to have to have the board come in to grant authority to administration to carry that out. It was through the entry plan that they would have the latitude to be able to take measures. Let's look at the emergency side of it. We've got an emergency, we need to respond. They inform the board, they allow the board to know, this is what we're going to do. I don't know, did you, did you start school with health measures, masks? Was it an option or was it mandatory?
Mandatory.
It was mandatory, okay.
Unless they had, like, outdoors.
Oh, totally, right? Okay, so I asked that question because be thankful that that was how you started school. Because I can count fingers and toes and another hand and another foot, the number of districts that didn't. And they are facing really, really difficult times where board members, community members are pushing back and saying, you're not going to do this to us. And so there's great insight and I commend you as a board for supporting. It's not an easy issue, it's a very divisive issue. And that doesn't mean that we start, still aren't having difficult conversations about this. But yeah, you know, it's, it's hard, it is hard. Questions about board meetings, board retreats. I would say that social media is not, it is not the place to air our differences. It is better that we air our differences within the board and be able to agree and disagree. That may mean calling a meeting with your superintendent and airing your differences, your concerns, your position with the superintendent. And here's what I would say to you, in a situation like that, if you're going to go in and meet with the superintendent, in the same fashion that I talked about how, if we have a board member that steps out of their lane, I advocate, if you're going to go in and meet with your superintendent, I want you to take another board member with you. I want you to write down a paper, what you're going to talk to the superintendent about. So that you are sure that you're able to address everything that it is that you want to discuss with them. Taking another board member protects you and it protects the superintendent. Because that other board member's going to know how you approached the superintendent. Was it pounding fifth, stopping feet? You also have a witness to say, how did the superintendent respond to me? And did you, did you have that opportunity to air your differences? It doesn't mean that it's going to change the decisions that were made, but it gives you that opportunity to address what your concerns are. And it's better placed there than it is on social media. The other way that you hold your superintendent accountable is through evaluation. If you have concerns, sometimes you address that through the evaluation process. That's how you hold accountable for growth. Polling is not a good idea. Again, it's, it's potentially crossing that line when it comes to looking for support or trying to build opposition to an item. So I would, I would caution you to stay away from that.
What if that's done by the board, you know, board talks about it, we want to know what the community thinks. And so the board says, let's poll the community, don't?
I wouldn't because, first of all, I don't think that that is a good pulse on the community. And here's why I believe that. I'm going to have, you know, my card club, and I'm going to go into my card club. First of all, what if I go out and I do that, Mike, but I wasn't given the directive by the board? So I have a scenario where we're talking about tearing down an old 1918 building. We bring the community in. We bring the community in, and we're just, and we're having a focus group meeting with the community there saying, here's what we're looking at. If we remodel it, we're looking at millions of dollars, blah, 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 blah. We have the meeting, we discussed it, we presented, we've engaged them with purpose to say, be prepared, we're talking about this, right? Okay, after the meeting's over with, two board members never make it out the door. Everybody else is gone, and all of a sudden, two board members take audience with this community group that's still there. And you know what? All we're doing is just listening to them. They're just telling us what they thought, what they, okay. Did the board direct those two board members to do that? And what did those two board members say? Now, they maybe didn't say anything, but that isn't what I heard as a community member. I heard Joe say, he'll get this taken care of. It's my word against his, right? So I don't, I don't encourage you to go out and poll and get a sense of, be more organized. Because when six members go out and engage, six members, maybe Krista only talks to two, in totality, maybe we've talked to even 50 people. Does 50 people represent your entire constituency in your district? Probably not, right? And maybe you're talking to all the same people or similar in life. I would be more purposeful and understand what it is that we're asking.
So that's different, earlier you talked about polling our community.
I did.
Engaging them.
I did.
That's different?
Yes, it is. There are different forms of engagement. Example, we, we want to use the QCP PUP money to do this. So that means we're going to task, but we don't have to ask you whether we are or whether we're not, right? So we may choose to bring our community in to inform them. We advertise it, we say, we're going to be talking about this, we get 30 people that show up. We invited the entire community. We vetted with the community that this is what we are planning to do. We're going for two cents, and this is what we plan to do with that money. Maybe we do that three times. That's a purposeful focus group engagement. Whereas what I was talking about is all-out stakeholder engagement. There can be different kinds. Great question.
So I have a question.
Okay.
You're talking about engaging people or whatever. So say a board member calls you. Do you listen to them? Or you hang up on them? Or you tell them? I mean, you've told them, you know, you need to go to the principal, you need to go to your superintendent, but.
You said a board member.
Yeah, you said a board.
Well, no, a board, I call, I mean, not a board member, a community member calls me.
A patron, okay.
Yeah. So how do you deal with that then?
Okay, so I've got a patron that just called me, and, or I'm at the basketball game and I can't get into the popcorn stand, right?
Exactly.
Right? Okay.
Ice cream, yeah.
I want you to go to the chain of command document. And on page one, on the back side, there's a diagram of the chain of command. Chain of command always is, it starts with where the concern is at. And I'm going to say to you, if it is personnel-related, I want you to caution, okay, just hear me out for just a second. So if it is personnel-related, I'm going to caution the individual to stop because you may be biasing me, should that individual ask for a process hearing. And we want to send them back. So let's say that, we're going to say that it's a coach. They still have some rights, but let's say that it's a coach. Sorry.
Very much.
So, so the coach, we send them back to the coach, and I've already talked to the coach. I could have told you this is what the outcome was going to be. I'm not satisfied. So what, who's next in line after a coach in your district?
AD.
Correct. After the AD, who's next?
Or is it the same person?
Okay, so that's one of the ones.
It doesn't take long.
So next is going to be above the principal, it's going to be superintendent. You're going to push him through that. When you get done speaking to Marsha Herring, okay, so this is key. So hear me out on this. I have an identity, I have a face, I'm a person who they contacted you. We had a board member that would come to board meetings and say, well, you know, I've been contacted by several people. Everybody went to this person's yard, and they'd have the discussions of the world over the head of the pickup, with the head, the front of the pickup. And they would solve the problems of the world. And they would come to the board meeting, well, you know, I've talked to a lot of people. Well, that came to a screech and halt when I said, who are they? And did you take it to the superintendent? So an anonymous letter comes to you, it goes in the trash. When five anonymous people come to the table to influence the decision of the board, that has no merit if you can't identify who they are and did you send them to the superintendent to carry out their discussion, to have their questions responded to. So that chain of command, what's so incredibly valuable about that is, if I contacted you, Krista, about an item that administration knew nothing about, when you're done talking to me on the phone, the next thing that I want you to do is I want you to call the superintendent. Marsha Herring called me, this is what she called me about, this is what I told her. Now, you've just protected yourself because I'm going to throw you under the bus. And I'm going to say, Krista said she's going to solve it for me. I tell you, that's what she told me, right? So when you call the superintendent and you say, Marsha Herring contacted me, excuse me, my notes, it's just. You've now placed it on his desk, and he had no idea that I had a concern. He can reach out to administration, administration can reach out to me, and we can talk about our differences. Maybe I have contacted the principal. I haven't contacted the superintendent yet. And when you call the superintendent and say, I contacted you, he's aware, because he's had a discussion with administration, that we maybe have a problem. Now, it's been elevated to a different level because I contacted a board member. Again, it allows him to be proactive and say, we've got a problem. Because now, you know, that individual's not satisfied. Nine times out of 10, when an individual contacts you, they're either trying to circumvent having to contact administration, or they contacted administration and they don't like the outcome, or they're just, they need somebody to listen to them because they've heard the same thing from every individual that they've spoken to at that point. So chain of command, if it's a student, they have to follow a chain of command. If it is a parent, they have to follow the chain of command. If it is a teacher, they have to follow the chain of command. If it's a classified staff member, they have to follow the chain of command. If it's an administrator, they have to follow the chain of command. If it's about the superintendent, what is the chain of command? And let's go back to administration. What if the administrators have a concern with the superintendent? What is their chain of command? What process do they follow?
They have, in the contract, they're, they can file a complaint counter.
Well, they're going to address it with the superintendent first.
Right, right.
If they're not satisfied with that process, it could be a grievance, or they could come to the board and address their concerns with you. Okay?
Would that be a closed session?
No, no. They're probably going to contact you outside of. Because the only reason you're going to the closed session, remember, is we're talking about his evaluation, or we've had an incident. It's probably still related to evaluation if we've had an incident, okay? So that's really the only time we're going to go into closed session. And again, contact your school attorney, crush your teeth, got your eyes, have that conversation. Okay, so if a patron has a concern about the superintendent, where do they go?
You should go white.
They should have had a discussion. They should have a discussion with the superintendent, and it's not been resolved to my satisfaction. Where do they go? They go to the board. It could be through a grievance. If they haven't gotten the grievance, if they haven't gotten up to policy through the superintendent, they still contact the board. Yes, that is where that goes.
Okay, I understand the chain of command. My point is, my question is, is it okay to listen to that person on the other end and then instruct them to go? Or do I have to instruct them right away? I'm sorry, I.
You're okay. You're fine.
Did you follow the chain of command, or do I have to listen to the whole spiel and then say, did you contact whatever the chain of command was?
Okay, I'm going to answer it two ways.
Okay.
Because if it's personnel, Krista, I want you to caution them and stop them. Because that could bias you. If it's not personnel-related, then you take them through that chain of command. And you may not have to listen to the whole story to be able to send them back through the chain of command. Because they may have bypassed the chain of command, and maybe they didn't talk to the principal. They didn't talk to the teacher, they didn't talk to the coach. Do board members have to follow the chain of command? We do. We do. If you have, if you as a board member have an issue with a teacher or a coach, I encourage you to engage a principal to sit down with you when you go to talk to that coach or that teacher. And I'm not saying that I don't trust whom it is that you're going to be engaging. I'm simply saying that you may be accused of leveraging your position on the board to threaten the teacher. And so when you have that third party sitting there, the principals hear how you approached the teacher and how the teacher responded to you, or the coach.
I didn't think a board member should approach a teacher.
You darn right. You're a parent first.
Yeah, it's about your child.
But you're not a board member when you're having that conversation with that teacher.
Okay, gotcha.
You're very good. Good point, Krista. Yeah, you're, you're a parent first and foremost, make no mistake about it. But what happens too often, and I, and I don't have any statistics to say that, so don't misunderstand me. But I can go in there and believe that I have a different level of authority when I'm talking to a teacher because I'm a board member. Well, guess what? The only place we have authority is when we're setting in an advertising meeting of the board. That's the only place that we have authority. When we're out on the street, most people probably don't know that we are a board member. They don't care until they need to care. They don't care about policy until it impacts them, make no mistake about it. I could care less about policy until you say, because of policy, here's the fact of the problem. Now, so this is really interesting. Earlier I said, you are, you serve as the boss of the board. The superintendent, so sorry, so sorry. Now I'm sorry to get confused. And, and the superintendent said six bosses. I'm going to go back to what I just said. We have no authority. Yes, you each, as a collective board, service the boss of your superintendent. When you evaluate, you each are responsible for having a voice. You must participate in the evaluation. It is required by law. You must evaluate your superintendent. He's been here five years, so you evaluate him once. But each one of you should have a voice in the evaluation of the superintendent. He does not serve one more than the other. He doesn't serve the board president differently. He engages that individual differently just simply because he's the board president. Board president has no different authority than any other one of you. It's just simply that he has more time consumed in his board role, but no different authority. Any questions about that, Mike?
So, yeah, with the evaluation, we just had this conversation before about compiling. You know, like, you know, you guys would do it, we're like, through you, but where we do our own. Should we all be in that room when we compile it? So, and each person give their rating on each question? Or should it just be all averaged together and we just see the average?
Okay, you can average the scores of six individuals. You do not, you can choose what comments are on the summary.
But I'm stumbling back to the number, numerical rating. Okay, so should, should the whole board be in there to compile that? And each board member say, I gave him a one, I gave him a five, I gave him a 10?
Well, first of all, where, where, where are we doing this?
Well, it would have to be in closed session if we're all here, so, yeah.
The only reason you can go into closed session to discuss the evaluation, and you can, I would, here's what I'm going to say to you after I say this. Vet it with your school attorney. Allow your school attorney to understand that we want to carry out evaluation like this, and allow your school attorney to say yea or nay, okay? Because the AG's office is saying, the Attorney General's office says, mm-mm. The only reason you go into closed session to discuss the superintendent evaluation is if there's something that could harm the reputation of the superintendent. So I'm saying, outside of your board meeting, outside of a closed session, each individual is completing an evaluation. And then some boards will allow the superintendent to do a self-assessment, and then you're able to see, where did the superintendent rank themselves? Where did we as a board rank them? So each individual's going to complete an evaluation. Through our process, we tally that for you. If you're conducting it on paper, then you're going to compile a summary. Or president, or secretary, okay? So we're going to take these six documents and we're going to compile a summary. And then that's a personnel document, so it's not a public document, so it can't be requested. But that summary is going to be then what we discuss as a board. And we're going to go into an open session, and we're going to talk about what has been the progress as a result of the superintendent's leadership. What did we learn about the superintendent in this? When, when we have all the comments there, here's why I strongly advocate for this. If, if I, as a board member, evaluate the superintendent and I say, you did not do this. The board gave you a directive, asked you to do whatever, and you did not do this. Okay, so when I'm filling out the evaluation, and you use a five-point scale?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine?
Ooh.
Doesn't make life.
Sort of a three-point scale, probably, but, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So a sort of a three levels, but levels within the levels.
Sophisticated, yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like it. Okay, okay, so that's the side point. Okay, just ignore my, my comments. Okay, so I'm going to, whatever score it is that I give, what I always encourage you to do, whether it's a great score, whether it's a low score, a medium score, somewhere in the middle, whatever, I want always for a board member to support the rating that you gave with some kind of feedback. It could be, you can think that they're excelling. Why do I believe that they're excelling, right? Because if I, if I'm one of those individuals, I'm like superintendent, so I'm going to go down the left or right side, whichever is the lowest score, and I'm just going to give all ones and say that, if that, I'm just being hypothetical. So I'm going to give all ones. But I give no rationale. That's not constructive for the superintendent to understand, why do you believe I deserve that? When I give a one, let's just say I give a one, and I don't believe that the superintendent did this, it's my responsibility as a board member to articulate why it is I believe you deserve that one.
Okay, so that goes.
Go ahead.
Goes back to my question, only it's an open session instead of a closed session. I mean, when it's all compiled. I mean, when it's all compiled into an average, you don't see who's got the ones and who's got the nines.
But he sees it, but see, they're saying that everybody's, everybody's summary, everybody makes the comments. He sees all the comments, it doesn't have to be a majority deal. So if one person has a comment that supports why they wrote a one, he sees the comment, he might not see if that person gave him a one. He sees their support and comment.
See, last year, last year we did, it was the consensus of the board to do the comments. Because that's kind of what is, you know, we...
But here's why that's a disadvantage to your superintendent. And this is just me, I firmly believe this because when there's, if there's that negative comment that Trent just described. So if I gave a one and I said, "You did not do this," the benefit to the superintendent seeing that is, he can then, if I say, "You did not do this," he can either validate, "You're right, I did not do that." Or he can discredit it and he can say, "But here's what I did." Okay, now, hear me say this. So then, when we set goals at the end of this, let's say that we take the three areas that are at the bottom, that we would like to see growth in this particular area. And we have these comments that say, you know, "You didn't do this, you didn't do that." And he's validated that that has not been done. When we build our goals as a collective group, we're taking those bottom three areas and we're building goals for the superintendent to support the evaluation, it allows him to understand, "Here are the expectations of this board. If I do A, B, and C, I've met your expectations. If I don't do A, B, and C, I've not met your expectations. And next year, when it comes time to evaluate, I probably should expect to see low scores on this because I didn't meet the board's expectations." When I understand, I don't know what I don't know. When you, when you, here's my example. We have a superintendent, this is a true example. Superintendent in the evaluation said, "You need to do a better job of getting into the buildings and engaging." Now, didn't go deep enough into that statement to say what they meant by it. So superintendent goes into the buildings, snaps some pictures of kids reading, yada yada, puts it on Twitter. "I'm getting into the buildings, I showed evidence that I'm getting to the buildings." The board says, "No, no, 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 no. Just because you went in and took pictures doesn't mean that you met our expectations." Ah-ha! So what was your expectation? What did you ask that individual to do? Get into the buildings and engage more. What did you want him to do? Engage with the staff, build a rapport, foster a good working relationship with the staff. Is that what you articulated? No. So, this is my point. When you, when you have that purposeful conversation and you take those areas of growth, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they're not doing a good job. Hear me say that. But if there is areas of growth that you want to see that individual improve, I don't know what I don't know. He does not read your mind, you do not read his mind. Allowing him to understand what you mean by improvement in those areas means that you've got to set goals with him and allow him to understand, "You're meeting our expectations, win." And then if he doesn't do that, that's a different conversation.
So you can have one person that says, "I'm just gonna, I don't like it when you wear a tie." The other guy says, "I want you to wear a tie." What's he supposed to do with that? If we don't come together and come up with one comment that's the majority of the board, and he gets one that doesn't like it and one that does, how can he satisfy both people?
But that's where superintendent evaluation is about his educational leadership, not how do you part your hair.
Well, I get that, I just, you know, exactly.
But that, but that's, but that's, I know, right? But that's my point. Is when we have that collaborative conversation, because he's sitting at the table, "We're not doing this," and surprising him later with the document, "We're gonna sit down and have purposeful conversations." If your expectations are for me to develop a communications plan or to do community engagement, or whatever the case may be, we have to be able to provide performance indicators that are measurable, that are driving, but how are we evaluating them? What are we learning through our evaluation tool? And too often, our evaluation tool is obsolete. And sometimes board members, just hear me say this, sometimes board members struggle with the evaluation when it doesn't allow them to evaluate character instead of leadership. You know, "There's no way for me to go through and fill this out." Or, you know, I don't say I don't, I with the superintendent. This is my opportunity to take those potshots. And that's why I say the comments are really important. And it's important that each one of you have a voice in the process because then you're holding them accountable to respond to you why he didn't do something. Or he did it and he can come and say, you know, "There's a comment in here that says I didn't do this. I want to, I want the opportunity to come to address that." Or if I've got four board members that have said, "You didn't do this," maybe you didn't do it, and he can, he's able to validate, "You're correct, I didn't." But that's why I say picking and choosing and not including all of those comments doesn't allow him to either defend himself or be able to affirm what you've said.
So do we need to go through all those comments or do the evaluation with you?
No, no.
Just the ones he wants to talk about, or just the, or what?
So what I would suggest that you do is when you come to the board meeting with your summary, again, it's a personnel document, so it isn't, it cannot be public records, your question.
But she would write all the comments on the ones that you serve.
She would, yeah, it's gonna be on the summary, right? And then what you can do is, in the board meeting, you're gonna, you're gonna go through and you're gonna talk about, "What's the progress that we've made under the leadership of the superintendent in the last year? What are some things that, you know, we're looking at in our goals? I think it would be great if the superintendent would do this. How does that, again, how do you pull it out of the evaluation on how they're leading education in your district? And, but it can be, it can be personal growth. I think it can be communications, it can be building, you know, we want more information on, do we have adopted curriculum? Do we have, you know, how, we want, we want you to set goals with the board. Things that, it must be measurable.
So, yes, I had requested that the board, several years ago, I received an evaluation that had contradictory comments on it. And so I thought, kind of like Mike said, but it wasn't about measurable professional practice. And so that's terrific language and that's very helpful. If, you know, comments are made about measurable, something that's measurable and about professional practice. You know, so our, you know, the tool that we use, so board members can put an NA, so, I mean, if it's not something that they've observed, you know, and we've had those discussions, where there's a, we have a, I don't know, there's probably forty rating scales in several domains. But there would be probably several that they might not be in a position to respond to, short of just putting it in the middle because I don't know, you know, this way or that way, because I haven't observed it. I've heard.
All the more reason why it may be obsolete. That may be our indicative, you know, especially when we look at our trend of evaluation. If we've had five years of evaluations and we're constantly getting not applicable, it's time to improve our tool.
Well, this is the evaluation we've had for twelve years at least.
I always say your tool's going to, it shouldn't move with the growth of your superintendent. We changed Dr. Ernst, and we're not changing it to move the target, to make it difficult for him. We're changing it so that we're upping our game and our accountability for growing education. It's one of the most important things that we do. So if you're struggling with it, I totally get it. I totally get it. All the more reason to have that discussion before. And, you know, and I'm going to tell you, you know, the goals, the goals are so, so important. It is completing the process. But the other thing I'll say to you in the same vein, do a board self-assessment. An effective superintendent evaluation is followed by a board self-assessment. How do we support the leadership of the superintendent? How do we hinder the leadership of the superintendent? And we can do both at times. But when we're operating outside of our lane, I'm gonna start asking questions. What does your agenda have? Are we allowing board members to dive into administrative issues? Absence of goals? Lack of understanding of what our role is? And how we're supposed to work with our superintendent? We talked a lot about that tonight. You've been very gracious with me.
Would my self-assessment be the same evaluation tool?
It's just, it's worded a little bit different simply because you're asking yourself.
I'd love to see the comments.
But it is the same criteria. Absolute same criteria.
About measurable professional practice.
Yeah. Might answer a lot of the other comments you get. So how does that work on you, say, if we went through you guys with his comments? Does that all come back, because he's the only one making a comment there. Does that come back to the whole board then to see how he does it?
It does, it's really, pull out the example summary, Mike. So I have a sample evaluation and then I have, it looks like this. This is the summary. And so what you're going to get is, you're going to get, this is what's powerful about it. This first page shows how the superintendent evaluated themselves and then how, and then how the board evaluated. And then what's really cool, what I usually do is I look at the bottom three of the self-assessment and the bottom three of the board. Are they alike? Are we on polar ends of the spectrum? And then, that's where we start looking and digging into what we're seeing in the bottom on behalf of the board, what we're seeing on behalf of the superintendent. And then we start diving into, pardon me, we start diving into the comments. We start diving into each one of the indicators. This is built upon standards. And the standards, when I developed these, considered Marzano instructional model, Danielson instructional model, Aquest and Cognia, which used to be Advanced Ed. So there's a, it's very much assessing an educational leader. And then there are performance indicators to measure under each one of those standards, how the superintendent is performing. But what's being revealed in the comments? What are we learning? Right? And then agree upon no more than three goals. Because we have our school improvement goals, we have our district goals. But this is specific to the superintendent.
I just ask members in Spanish, because...
It's supposed to be that way.
It's for you, Trent.
It's just that simple. But the color coding is what, it's really cool when it prints out for you. It shows you right where you're at.
So I'm gonna go back to the voting as a board. Are you saying it's okay if we don't always agree? It's four to two, whatever, one to five?
We certainly need it.
Yeah, I'm, you know, is it great when you're six oh? But always, that's, that is the value of a public board of education. Each board view brings a different dynamic to this. You ask different questions, you're passionate about different things. That's what drives purposeful discussion. It's important that you have a safe place that you can express yourself. And at the end of the day, you each have a vote. And that's an important vote. And you gotta vote what you believe is right. And that doesn't always mean you're going to be on the prevailing side. It's okay. Now, if you're obstinate and you just vote no, because you always vote no, different conversation.
But after the vote, you're all on the same side.
Absolutely. But each one of you needs to feel comfortable in expressing yourself. It needs to be safe. What other questions do you have? I know I have overwhelmed you with a lot of information.
Nobody cares. Well, to be continued, I hope.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So what would you advise, so Marcia, for administrative team, you know, working with the board for continued board development, administrative team development? Ours sometimes goes a different angle than the board's does. How do we keep those woven together? I mean, it's not always easy to go to conference, you know, for three days at the harvest season.
I get it.
Which is, which is good for development, not the only opportunity, but, I mean, what are our opportunities to continue to grow together?
If you're comfortable with my facilitation, we continue this conversation. What I do with boards is, so, to be continued. Let's say that you would decide that you want to set goals and you want me to facilitate that discussion. I, what I do with you is if you schedule that within six months of today's date, I cut the fee in half. If you schedule a series, let's say that you would want to do two more. You wanna do one just on superintendent evaluation. But you wanna design your own, you wanna custom evaluation aligned to your job description. Keep that in mind. Then I would even look at doing a different cost factor for you. We're, this isn't about the dollars and cents, it's about what do we do to support you and benefit you? And so, we have resources available, oftentimes through our foundation, where I can offset programs and services with dollars and cents. So whatever it is, and if I don't provide it and you need it, I'll develop it. I'm always up for the challenge that way. But I would, if it were me, I would start with goals. I would pull yourselves together and have purposeful, great conversations about where do you aspire to see this district go? And set yourselves some goals of what's important to you as a board, but most especially, what are your administrators? What's on their radar? And that's how I will describe it. They'll start out a goal planning session by saying, "Here's what's on our radar." What's really powerful is when you have two fairly new administrators. I know Kyle talked about that, or somebody did. He talked about how, you know, as he came in, he was identifying different things. Well, that's really powerful. What initiatives have they implemented in their buildings? How are they carrying out the school improvement goals? Where are you in your school improvement visit? Is that...
The spring.
Oh, well, there you go, right? So what's really cool is when you follow that, we're doing the planning. We're doing that in several districts this year. So I'll lay that out there. But I would say, I think the most beneficial to you is conduct an effective superintendent evaluation so that you're on the same board, no superintendent, with your superintendent. You have a conversation. Draw that line in the sand and say, "Going forward, this is how we're going to do this. What's been said has been said, what's been done has been done. This is how we're gonna go forward." Set those goals so that you have buy-in and you can now drive your decision-making. and you can now drive your decision-making, your discussion. And then, you know, where are we at? You know, where are, do you feel like you're making strides? Do you feel like things are different? Is there a sense? We talked about community engagement. That might be something that is a great board goal. I don't know. I, the goals are more important to me than anything because I think it gives you a better sense of, what are we doing? Where are we going?
To me, the community engagement thing is tough because I know with Dr. R. Cain, he had, you know, advertised, "Come in, have a cup of coffee," talk to me about, nobody came in. And a lot of times, we don't, you know, budget hearing needs. There's nobody in the space, there's nobody here. And we can put stuff out there that we want them to be involved, but majority of the time, nobody comes.
This is very different. I will tell you that this is very, very different in the way that we approach it. What you put into it, you get out of it. And that's why, when we do community engagement, what I would do is I would meet with you as a board, and you're going to create an exhaustive list of individuals that you want to have participate in it. And we send personal invites. But we're also inviting the community at large. Here's another thing that's really, really important to community engagement when you do those focus groups. You have to put the questions, three questions, ninety-minute meeting. No one wants to show up for a three-hour meeting. Ninety minutes, three questions, and you allow them to understand what the three questions are. Because the other thing that I never want to have happen is I don't want them to come thinking it's open mic night, and I can talk about anything that I want because it is a train wreck. I've had it happen once, and I wanted to have somebody escort me to my car. It was probably gonna be the board because they wanted to hang me from my toes. But when you don't follow directions, that's what happens. So we communicate what those questions are. Predominantly, most of it, as I told you, is done through online surveys, which is really, really powerful. It gives me that opportunity to have that voice. Again, your community's not giving you walking papers, but to put your finger on the pulse to understand their expectations, oftentimes what you find out is that you're much more like your community than you are different than your community. But it fosters a good working relationship. So then my challenge to you is, don't stop once you have built that relationship. Keep going, and your community's going to say that to you because we'll let, we allow them to evaluate the community engagement process, and they will say, "Keep doing this." It's, it is positive, and it's a rich experience.
So what do you do, though, our line deals are more just one question? Or do you do the three questions?
No. The questions, it's, it's pretty involved. It's pretty involved.
It's a lot more than that.
It is, it is. The administrator and the staff, I told you that those surveys, they're really mirror image each other. There might be forty questions in it. Now, as I say that to you, it'll take your staff about one hour to complete. So it's not like, you know, this is two, three hours involved in it. Your students, when we do your students, we wanna be sure that it's an equitable experience. And so what we look for there is to have that conducted, it takes about ten minutes, fifteen minutes for them to complete it. So we do it in a course that all students participate in. And we also pick a resource class so that all students have the opportunity to participate. The elementary can, we can actually have it be audio, so it's read to the student. We don't have to do third grade. That's entirely up to you. Lots of districts will do just secondary only. But that's, but we try to address equity, inclusiveness, that type of thing. But the big thing that I want you to hear me say is it's not a climate survey. This is not a climate survey. So this isn't evaluating administrators. This is, where's our district at right now? And what do we do to move it to the next level? Start difference. So what I'm gonna do is I'm going to give you my business card. And if I leave here and you think, I wish I would have said, I didn't feel comfortable in saying, y'all, hang on. Print this to me.
I wish I would have baked it for you.
Yeah. I wish I would have done food.
I know, it's like, you know, I'm gonna take a nap. I'm gonna trade cookies from tablecloth.
I wish I would have. I didn't feel comfortable, you may text me. Call me, email me, anytime, anytime. That is what I am here for. Love the opportunity to respond to your questions. Anything else?
Could you mind telling us what your fee is on this evaluation?
The evaluation is free. There's no fee. If you do the online process, it's three hundred dollars.
Oh, so if we just use this ourselves, but don't turn it to you?
But the online process, you can't pay it.
You can't, you don't get all the results and stuff, then?
Right. We won't have a graph like that. It'll be pretty involved to chart it out because it's, it's both, three hundred dollars. And we do that just because of the administrative time distributing the links that we need.
Well, it could be a lot more comparison from your.
Yes. And make them say, "By the way, we have other evaluation tools. If you don't like that tool, and you want something different, or if you want a custom tool, then we'll have a different conversation." So don't feel that we didn't hold. We do have a job description that matches that evaluation tool. Yes, it really is. You should be evaluating based on your expectations, which is in your job description. That's important. So how did I do?
Well, you won't have to, I'll call John, you'll be late tomorrow.
Oh, no. This is my life. It's really fine, it's really fine. I just really appreciate the opportunity, and I have the, you have found value in this conversation.
Can you come to our board?
I actually enjoy going for short meetings. I don't wait that out.
Sitting on this side of the table.
It is, it's different. It is different. All right.
Thank you very much.
You are so welcome. Thank you for having me.